At this time, we will now resume our school board workshop. The last item is School Board Workshop 2: Redefining Our Schools Update. Today, the school board is being asked to provide guidance to the superintendent on the final schools to be addressed in Phase 2 and the amended timeline. Please, if you are here for public speaking, please make sure to sign in on the sign-in sheet so we have, we've captured everyone who is here to speak. I now turn it over to the superintendent for a statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone, BCPS community, parents, stakeholders, and all that are present and most likely watching online. Today, we begin to turn the page on redefining our schools Phase 2, marking an important milestone in our ongoing effort to right-size our system, strengthen academic programs, and respond to community voice. I want to take a moment to thank our staff led by Dr. Wanza for their outstanding work in preparing this presentation for leading and for leading meaningful community conversations across the district. So that's a round of applause for Dr. Wanza and her team. Over the past several weeks, the team has conducted eight community meetings throughout Broward County. I also want to thank our parents, staff, municipal leaders, and community partners who attended and provided thoughtful feedback. Your insights have been invaluable in shaping how we move forward. The feedback we receive reinforces what we all know our community deeply values as neighborhood schools and wants what's best for our students. But to honor that commitment, we must also be willing to have those tough conversations. We can no longer afford to fund empty or half-empty schools. We must fund students and the quality of their educational experiences. Every dollar should strengthen instruction, expand programs, and enhance the learning environments where our students thrive. As we move into this next phase, our guiding principle remains clear: to align our resources and facilities to best serve students, sustain excellence, and build a stronger future for Broward County Public Schools. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wanza and her staff to go through the redefining our schools presentation.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Hepburn. I am Valerie Wanza, the Chief Strategy and Innovation Officer. Before we get started, I would ask my team to introduce themselves as well. In addition to the individuals who will introduce themselves, we also have on our team Ms. Patty Brown, the Director of Athletics and Student Activities. She's here, as well as Eric Anderson, the Director of Before and After-School Care Programs.
Good afternoon. Jobek, Director of Demographics and Enrollment Planning.
Good afternoon. Adrian Parker, Executive Director, Strategic Initiative Management.
Good afternoon. Willie Wood, Director of Performance Management.
Good afternoon. Cassandra Freed, Director of Magnet and Innovative Programs.
Good afternoon. Dante Collins, Director of Charter Schools Management Support Department.
As Beacon brings up the presentation and we begin the conversation, our team, we would be remiss, although we are the collective group that was charged with facilitating and leading this work, we would be remiss if we didn't thank and give our sincere gratitude to the cabinet and the senior leadership team for their support, as well as the individuals who worked tirelessly with us to facilitate the eight meetings across the community that would be Beacon, Legislative Affairs, Marketing and Communications, Strategic Partnerships, Physical Plan Operations, Custodial Grounds, definitely our language interpreters. We're thankful for our teacher leaders and a variety of our leadership pipeline programs for coming out, and more importantly, to the eight high schools that opened their doors, welcomed us, and just were gracious hosts for this process. So as Beacon brings up the presentation, as Ms. Leonardi stated, our purpose here today really is to have some conversation, dialogue, and then finally hear from the board, the schools that we will go out in the next phase of this process and have the three regional meetings, and also look at the amended timeline that we have included as well. Okay? And this just walks us through how the presentation is organized. Again, as the superintendent said, this was the meeting schedule where we conducted the eight community meetings across the community. And we also met with cities that were, that are experiencing under enrollment. We met with the city managers and in some instances, the mayor, some of the city commissioners. We also, the superintendent had a meeting with the City Manager Association, and he also hosted the mayor's roundtable in September. As we went out and engaged with the community, these, these six items here pretty much encapsulate the collective community consensus on all of the information that we received. And as we heard stated in an earlier comment by one of our advisory chairs, the, the community does get concerned around this annual process, and they, and they're really looking for some stability as we continue to right-size the district and they have to make decisions for their families. And then two of the things that really stand out, obviously, is around marketing and facility conditions. So the next slide just basically talks about the thought exchange process and the process that we use to garner the thoughts of our community and civic leaders. And I'm going to move through this because you'll see, this is the question that we asked individuals who attended the meetings, as well as those online, to respond to. As the district works to right-size our footprint, a variety of strategies will be implemented during the redefining Phase 2, including but not limited to, and we talked about the tough decisions around school consolidations, repurposing grade configurations, and improving academic offerings, but more importantly, what we wanted to know from our parents and the community is what models, programs, and resources are important to families and the community. So over the eight nights, we had over 1,000 participants that gave us over 1,000 thoughts, and then over 15,000 ratings occurred for the thoughts that were presented. And included in the presentation is a link for each one of the thought exchange portals so that parents can go in and they can see the thoughts and they can see the interactive ratings as well. We also wanted to report out to the board and the community both the in-person attendance as well as those who watched each meeting online, so that summary is provided for you on Slide 11. And then also included in, as in the appendix, you will see for each one of the 34 schools, a complete facility conditions index. But as we walk through some of the strategies, you will see a number that says FCI, and this is pretty much how the facilities index condition is computed. And as we go through the presentations and there are questions related specifically to this, Ms. Paul and her team are here to support us, and we thank them for that. So the first meeting we had was at Miramar High School, and you can see there were over 186 participants. This is their collective thoughts that they entered into the thought exchange portal around the question that we asked. And the schools that we addressed at Miramar were Fairway Elementary, Miramar Elementary, Sunshine Elementary, Watkins Glades, and New Renaissance. And the potential strategies there, I will go over them high level because I know that it will, we'll have greater discussion in a little bit. So basically, for this meeting, we talked about the potential, or we, one of the potential strategies, I'll say, is to combine Fairway and Sunshine on one of the campuses and then utilize the other campus for another district use. For Watkins, the city of Pembroke Park has expressed interest in leasing some space for community programming to support not only the school but as well as the surrounding community. And then Miramar Elementary School is a school that does have space, to possibly use space at Miramar High, at Miramar Elementary School, I'm sorry, for either some community program or another district use. And then lastly, the one that garners a great bit of attention is to repurpose Glades Middle School into a branch campus of Sheridan Technical College to expand workforce education opportunities in partnership with the city of Miramar and the local business community. And then this would require us, or we think it will require us, to expand some of the elementary schools in this feeder pattern to a six-to-eight model to accommodate for this strategy. And then the, the following maps kind of give you some enrollment data, some space utilization. Again, at the very bottom is the facility conditions index, and then you can see the enrollment for Fairway and Sunshine as it relates to the decision-making purposes if the schools were to be combined and on which facility they would be combined. And the same is true. This, this slide provides the same information for both Glades Middle and New Renaissance Middle School. Okay. Our second conversation was at Hallendale High School, and you can see that, again, 128 participants entered thoughts there and the number of ratings there, and this is just a summary of the thoughts that were collected that night. And then the strategy for Hallendale High School is to redesign the school in a four-day school week model, similar to that at Pompano Beach High School. However, the programmatic design, we will collaborate with the local businesses and the community, understanding that Hallendale High School is a current high school, unlike Pompano Beach High when it reopened, the, there would need to be some kind of consideration or thought process around how the students currently at the school receive priority or, or if it is a phase out. But really, it's really working to redesign the school to a four-day school week, as well as do some unique community programming to attract students to the school. And then we will work on entrance criteria and things of that nature, and also to develop a very comprehensive, comprehensive marketing strategy for the school, and I'm sure members from the community will speak more as, in the public speaking session. I keep pushing the button. Okay. I got to press it where? Okay. And then this, this slide really gives, again, some enrollment information for Hallendale High, as well as some facility information. The reason why Miramar High School is here is because depending on how the selection criteria, the boundary, the current students at the school, it may bring into question or bring into the potential of actually reassigning some of the school, some of the students to Miramar High School, which, you know, I'm a student who, well, former student, no longer a student, a former student who once, obviously, I attended Miramar High, I resided in the city of West Park growing up. At that time, West Park was assigned primarily to Miramar-McArthur High School. Now, the entire neighborhood is assigned to Hallendale, so that Miramar is here just with the possibility that some of the schools may, some of the students, rather, may get assigned to Miramar High, so that is why Miramar High is up here. The next meeting we had was at South Broward High School, and you can see the participants through the summary of the thoughts. And at South Broward High School, we discussed the three middle schools listed, and for these three schools, two of the schools, Addicks and McNichol, are in the city of Hollywood, and Olson is in the city of Dania Beach. The community really expressed an interest to offer some type of workforce training programs, technical, technical education programs at Addicks Middle School to address some community needs. So there's the potential there to partner with Sheridan Tech, as well as Community School South, obviously collaborating with the community on the programming that would be offered. And then the city of Dania Beach has been very vocal and very supportive in occupying space at Olson Middle School, not only to deliver some community programming, but the programming would be available to enhance the academic offerings at the school. And lastly, the city of Hollywood has expressed an interest in utilizing some space at McNichol for some administrative needs that they have, and they are very interested in supporting career programs that would add value, added value to Addicks and McNichol Middle Schools. Our next conversation was at Dillard High School, and you see the summary of thoughts there that were submitted by the 80 participants, as well as the 554 ratings. And we addressed Bennett Elementary, Norfolk, Thurgood Marshall, and Walker Elementary Schools, and so some of the strategies there would be, one, to combine Norfolk Elementary and Walker Elementary, combine the boundary with the students all attending Walker Elementary School. For the Norfolk Elementary site, it would then be to enter into a partnership with Junior Achievement of South Florida and build the Educational Career Center that would, that would be utilized not only for the students but also for the community in that area. The emphasis would be on workforce readiness and secondary education. Then for the Thurgood Marshall Campus, really an opportunity to perhaps transition that school to a K-8 gifted education and dual-language academy. Obviously, support the Sports Academy Elementary model at Bennett Elementary School and continue to enhance, support, and provide resources to the programs currently flourishing at Northside Elementary School. And for this model, you will see both the enrollment, the capacity, as well as the facility conditions index data for the three elementary schools that would be involved in some type of a boundary situation, depending on what strategies are implemented. The next conversation was at Stranahan High School, and you, there were the 111 participants, this is a summary of their thoughts, as well as the ratings. And then for Stranahan High School, the community is really interested in developing and offering a maritime industry marine magnet at the school. There's great interest, as well as an opportunity to provide this right in the neighborhood of, for students, and, and one of the things that it would not do is, it is not intended to compete or conflict with the, the marine science magnet that is currently at South Broward High School, but this would really broaden the spectrum of programming offered, obviously collaborate with the community, as well as the local businesses in the area on the programmatic design. And here again is a call for another comprehensive marketing strategy for the pathways that will be offered at the school. The next conversation was at Plantation High School, and you see the thoughts, the summary of the thoughts and the ratings. And at Plantation High School, we discussed Bear Middle, Plantation, Middle West Pine Middle, and Plantation High School. So one of the strategies is to combine Plantation Middle and Plantation High School into a comprehensive six-to-12 school on the campus of Plantation High School. And the, the city of Plantation is very much interested in developing, while, while the slide says "public service" because it leaves it broad, but the city really wants to focus on a public safety type of career pathway, to really focus on a police academy, a fire academy, EMT, the wide breadth of public safety type of career pathways. But we left it open on the slide to say "public service" because they may decide to add on to that, but their initial focus would really be on the public safety aspect. And then we would repurpose the Plantation Middle facility for another district use. We, there's also the potential to create an innovative seamless K-8 pathway design between Horizon Elementary, which is just east, right next door to Bear Middle School. The city of Sunrise also currently, they're utilizing some space where they have prepared a partnership, if it's not already finalized, to utilize space at West Pine, and they would look to perhaps utilize more space on that campus. Or the other potential strategy would be to combine Bear Middle School and West Pine's boundaries and assign all of the students to West Pine, and then repurpose Bear for another district use. And here are the maps for Bear and West Pine, so that you can see the data there, and also for Plantation Middle and Plantation High School. Our next conversation was at Charles W. Flanagan High School. You can see the participants, 435, and the thoughts that were entered as the summary, as well as the ratings. And this is the list of schools that we discussed. There were several elementary schools, as you can see, and two middle schools. And so some of the strategies here is, would be to extend the grades offered at Dolphin Bay, Silver Lakes, and Sunset Lakes to K-8 schools, to combine Chapel Trail and Panther Run on, into one campus, on the Chapel Trail campus, and then repurpose Panther Run either as a special day school for students with autism. There's also the opportunity to keep Panther Run as an elementary school and co-locate a school within a school for students with autism at Panther Run. And then another strategy that calls two other schools into the conversation would be to combine Palm Cove Elementary School and Pines Lakes Elementary School onto one, either one of the campuses, similar to the Sunshine, Sunshine and Fairway for, over on the Miramar slide, and then repurpose whichever facility is not being used for students for another district use. Oh, okay. And then the, as, since there were a number of schools addressed, we would, the board did give us direction to go ahead and study this, to move the Silver Palms Elementary School feeder pattern from the Walter C. Young and Flanagan feeder to the Silver Trail and West Broward. Another option here would be to split the boundary of Walter C. Young Middle School into Pines Six Through Twelve Collegiate Academy and Silver Trail and create a three-to-eight gifted education and dual-language academy. And then another strategy could be to split Walter C. Young, again, into Pines and Silver Trail, and then partner with the city of Pembroke Pines to build attainable workforce housing on the current Walter C. Young site. And at, just to, for the board's remembrance and for the edification of the community, we do have a 50-year lease with the city of Pembroke Pines, the city- The city owns the land, the district, you know, built the facilities, but we do have a 50-year lease that doesn't, it expires in the year of 2037. And then here are the maps for Chapel Trail and Panther Run, if the strategy to combine those schools is considered. Here are the maps for Dolphin Bay, Silver Lakes, and Sunset Lakes again, if the potential strategy for extending those grades to eighth grade were to be studied deeper. And then here are the maps for Lakeside, Palm Cove, and Pines Lakes. And then depending on what happens in this conversation, we may or may not decide to now bring Coconut Palm Elementary into the conversation because they would be the only school, even though those students are assigned to New Renaissance for Middle School, high school, Everglades is their high school, so Coconut Palm may or may not come into the conversation. And here are the maps for Silver Trail and Walter C., the maps and the corresponding enrollment and facility data. And then since we would move the students from Silver Palms over from Flanagan to West Broward, we did, for the board's edification, provide maps and data for Flanagan and West Broward. Our final conversation was at Coral Springs High School. And you can see the summary of the thought exchange data there. The strategies for consideration, obviously, we discussed the middle schools listed. The community was very much interested in an infusion of highly sought-after innovative programs like Cambridge dual-language, but just some highly sought-after innovative programs into all of the middle schools in the area. And then another strategy, they, both strategies would split in some way the boundary of the current Forest Glen Middle School and either adjust the boundaries of Coral Springs Middle, Ramblewood Middle, or Sawgrass Springs Middle to accommodate or allow for all of the students currently assigned to Forest Glen Middle to remain in the city of Coral Springs for middle school. And then the other potential strategy would be to split the boundary of the current Forest Glen Middle School and assign the students into either Coral Springs Middle or Lyons Creek Middle School and then repurpose the Forest Glen facility for another district use. And here are the maps for Coral Springs and Forest Glen Middle Schools. And then one of the things we heard from the community was really the potential of having some type of a dedicated school or dedicated facility for students with autism. So there is the opportunity to co-locate a school within a school at Coral Springs Elementary School because they do have space, if that is something that the board wanted staff to further examine. And here's just for the board's edification as well as the public, the map of Coral Springs Elementary School. As it relates to our non-traditional schools, there is an opportunity potentially to combine Seagull and Whitten here in the central region of the county. Some of the programming at Seagull is situated on the Whitten campus currently, but basically all of the students and programs would be transitioned to Whitten Rogers. We would relocate the current Adults with Disabilities Program to another site. And then the Seagull campus, we could potentially partner with the city of Fort Lauderdale for some needs that they may have, or we can repurpose that for another district use. So the slide here just provides an initial look into some potential cost savings or financial impact if we were to completely close a school and offline it. The superintendent I know will speak more, or staff, as questions come up, because what we also have to realize is if we maintain the facility for another district use, we do not realize all of these cost savings. The next three slides just provide to the board and the public some information on the Schools of Hope legislation. I won't read the slide verbatim, but if questions come up, staff is here and we're prepared to answer them. But the next three slides do provide information on that legislation as it relates to how schools are identified, what happens for facility usage, and expand it right out of the statute explanation there. But we are here and we're prepared to answer questions if they arise. And then for the timeline, we did make two minor adjustments. The first one, we have, obviously, we're here today on October 7th for the second workshop. We have worked with superintendent's calendar as well as we reached, had Legislative Affairs reach out to all of the municipalities. So we have established the three dates for the three regional meetings. And so we went ahead and adjusted the timeline to reflect those actual dates. And then once we know the schools that are going to move to the next phase, then we will be able to actually create the school boundary committee. And we are looking to have orientation with them in this month. And then they would meet in the month of November to actually vote on recommendations that they believe, well, recommendations that should come forward to the school, where they'll be able to vote and give some feedback. And then we know in November, the board will have its organizational meeting. And then we'll be able to finalize the actual December and January dates. And again, as I said, these are the dates for the three regional meetings. The north meeting will be at Coral Springs High School, the central meeting will be at Dillard High School, and the south meeting will be at Miramar High School. And that is the extent of the presentation. We have a very extensive appendix. And with that, Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Hepburn and Vice Chair Leonardi, we have completed the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation. Okay, for the public speakers, I will be reading four names at a time. So if two could line up on one podium and two on the other, so we can move nicely and quickly, that would be great. So the first four names I have are Nicole Nunez, Christine McMahon-Nebby, Anna Carrujo, and Cindy Kim. So just be prepared to speak when the other is done. We're doing three minutes, yes. Nicole Nunez.
Good afternoon, members of the board. First, I want to thank Rebecca Thompson for inviting me this afternoon and giving me the opportunity to share my family's story. This is my son Harrison. He is in the ESC Cluster Program at Sunset Lakes Elementary. He is not just a student here. He is a part of the very fabric of the school. He participates in school activities with all students. He is taught by exceptional teachers, and he is supported by staff who is fully committed to making sure that he is fully included. Because of Sunset Lakes Elementary, he is thriving. He is learning social skills. He is playing with his peers, building friendships, and more importantly, growing confidence every day. And his peers learn from him too. Empathy, patience, and acceptance, that is true inclusion. This is where children learn and grow together. And that's not just a nice idea, it's the law. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires that children with disabilities be taught alongside non-disabled peers whenever possible. That is the least restrictive environment. But if the only middle school option in our district is an autism center or a charter school, that promise cannot be fulfilled. Those settings isolate and instead don't allow for choices from my family and for children like Harrison. That would just be devastating. That's why I'm here this afternoon, not only as Harrison's mother, but on behalf of so many working parents, staff, and community members at Sunset Lakes Elementary who cannot be here. We are asking you to expand Sunset Lakes Elementary into a K-8 to avoid School of Hopes coming into our community, but also to strengthen the ESC clusters along with it. My family and other families want stability. We want teachers to have their resources, and we want our community to grow strong so that we keep our kids together in their home schools where they belong. I want you all to look at this picture. Harrison is not in the margins. He is at the center of his school community. To weaken the ESC clusters at Sunset Lakes by stopping at fifth grade would not just harm him and his classmates, it would harm the culture of the entire school. It would push families away from Broward and from our district and not give us any options, which is why I moved back to the district for those options. But if you expand Sunset Lakes into a K-8, you're sending the opposite message. You're telling families that we are valued. You're telling and inspiring teachers in Florida's highest-demanding field, "We care. You have a job here." You're giving students opportunities like electives, clubs, and community, and you allow the school to compete with other options in the area and win. Board members, this is more about facilities, it's about values. It's about listening to our community and asking them to expand Sunset Lakes, grow our clusters, and keep kids like Harrison included and supported, thriving. You have the choice to show the community that you hear us, that you value us, that you value our kids, and not that you're going to uproot it. So I ask you today, please expand our school, please expand our ESC clusters, and give our kids all the possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine McMahon-Nebby.
Good afternoon, Chair, Superintendent, and members of the board. My name is Christine McMahon, and I am proud to serve the students, families, and teachers at Glades Middle School. This work is deeply personal to me because I know just how much strong public schools matter. Glades is not a failing school. We have consistently earned an A rating. We have one of the newest facilities in the district and a staff with decades of commitment. This is a school not to close or repurpose, but to invest in. Our proposal submitted to the board on Thursday offers three innovative pathways, an exceptional student academy, a STEM magnet academy, and a Cambridge gifted academy. These build on Glades' strengths, expand opportunities for every learner, and bring to Western Broward the kind of programming families currently have to travel east to find. These pathways will attract new families and create a natural pipeline to our feeder high schools. We are ready to grow enrollment, expand industry certifications, and continue Glades' legacy as a model of excellence. There's also a proposal from the board to repurpose Glades as a branch campus for Sheridan Technical College, moving middle school students to elementary campuses, or, as reported in the Sun Sentinel, giving them the option to attend New Renaissance. Respectfully, I must urge you to consider what that truly means. Our elementary schools are not equipped for adolescents. They lack basketball courts, soccer fields, tracks, adequately-sized gyms, and music facilities like band and choir rooms. They were built for five-year-olds, not 14-year-olds. Mixing teenagers with kindergarteners raised serious concerns about space, safety, and developmental appropriateness. Middle school students need environments that challenge them academically, socially, and physically, not spaces designed for much younger children. Many students have already chosen Glades over New Renaissance because they wanted a different environment. Forcing those students back or dispersing our students amongst elementary schools will not strengthen Broward's schools. It will only drive more parents to charter options, leading to further enrollment loss for the district. Glades has the facilities, the staff, and the community programs in place already to meet the needs of learners. By redefining Glades instead of dismantling it, you preserve vital middle school opportunities while still expanding workforce education for the community. In short, Glades Middle School does not need to be repurposed, it needs to be redefined. With your support, we can grow, innovate, and remain a cornerstone for the community. On behalf of our students, our families, and our teachers, I urge you to support our proposal to redefine Glades Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Kim, or Anna Carrujo, Cindy Kim, and then Penelope Gabbert.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Hepburn. Thank you. My name is Anna Carrujo, and I'm a parent of an autistic child in Broward County Public Schools. I'm here today to support a South Florida Autism Charter School campus in Broward. I hear many arguments for and against an independently-run model, so it's important for the board to keep a few things in mind. One-third of the students at the South Florida Autism Charter School in Hialeah Campus drive there from Broward County every day, some all the way from Deerfield Beach. But 100% of the families that are in that school are there by choice. This should never be referred to as segregating ASD students. These are all families who found this to be the best fit for their child. Adding this choice in Broward does not affect or change any programs currently in place or do anything to affect the cluster classes currently servicing children on the spectrum. Before deciding what kind of program to offer for ASD, I really beg you to look at the two pre-K models we have for autism. Ark Broward and Bodwin are by far the most sought-out programs because they are providing better services. This is not a criticism, it is just a fact. Please look into S-FACS. Parents from your community have brought this forward out of necessity. All we ask is that you listen to us and involve us in the decision-making process. There are so many options out here that we are discussing today for neurotypical students to choose from. Autistic students deserve the same. I would also like to point out the financial benefits of partnering with South Florida Autism Charter Schools. As a district-managed charter, this would generate charter management fees that would go straight back into BCPS. Additionally, the potential lease of an under-enrolled or under-utilized property could generate income for the district as well. I urge board members and district staff to reach out and speak to current families from Broward who have chosen to send their children to S-FACS and gain some perspective as to why this would be a beneficial model to offer in our own community. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy Kim. And then we have Penelope Gabbert, Ayesha Brooks, and Maxine Seem.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hepburn, Madam Chair, and members of the school board. I'm here today on behalf of Glades Middle School. I serve as our staff chair, as the PTSA vice president, and the SAC gifted parent representative, but most importantly, as a parent of an eighth grader who has attended Glades for the past three years. I first considered Glades after meeting with our Cambridge director. And my decision was truly confirmed after his elementary school, my son's elementary school teacher told me that the curriculum at Glades was far stronger than that of nearby charter schools. And that teacher was absolutely right. Glades Middle School has challenged and supported my son in ways that have helped him to thrive. So Ms. McMahon spoke about our proposal for the three different pathways, and I'm going to focus on two of those pathways. We're asking the board to redefine Glades Middle School as a dual-magnet school for STEM and advanced academics. And this makes sense because Glades already has both the infrastructure and the teachers in place to deliver this curriculum at a very high level. This dual-magnet program will succeed because it's already working for students like my son. A lot of our public schools have the same electives and clubs, but what sets Glades apart is the quality of its educators and its programs. For example, my son's computer science teacher, she was a finalist of the CT, for this, she was a finalist for the CDE Teacher of the Year Award. She provides industry certifications for her students, and thanks to her, my son has, already has certifications in PowerPoint, HTML, and CSS. His debate coach and teacher, Ms. McMahon, who just spoke, she is a diamond-level coach with over 10,000 National Speech and Debate Association points. And through our, through our team, we have a strong and active team of 38 students. And through our debate program, we, my son competes at monthly tournaments, gaining NSDA points that follow him through high school. In fact, they have a competition today. And I do want to mention that Glades Middle School is the only middle school that hosts an invitational tournament for all middle schools in our county. My son's biology teacher holds two master's degrees, bringing advanced knowledge and passion to her classroom. And he has been taught by a dedicated team of JEM math teachers and participates in the Math Club, which participates in two national competitions, the AMC eight and Math Counts. So Glades is already providing a foundation for a true dual-magnet program. Redefining this school in this way would not only recognize what is already happening there, but it would strengthen and open opportunities for many more students. So today, on behalf of Glades, we urge the board, please do not repurpose it
Thank you.
into a technical college, but redefine it into a dual-magnet program for STEM and advanced academics.
Penelope Gabbert. Penelope Gaberret.
Good afternoon, Members of the Board. My name is Penelope. I'm here today not only as a concerned mother, but as a voice for the many families and faculty members who make Pantheron Elementary the special place that it is. I understand that a change needs to be made, but I'm here today to plead from my heart, please choose the option that allows our children to remain at Pantheron. Whatever that option may be, I beg you to consider it. That being said, I urge you not to overlook the students who are here right now with any changes that may come. Please understand, any decision made should truly benefit the children currently enrolled as well. It should enhance their experience, their opportunities, and the overall quality of their education. If additional funding comes in, it should also directly support our kids and help strengthen the programs and community they already are a part of. I tried to come up with a list of all the reasons why you should keep our school intact, from the safety of the building itself to the convenience of the location. The reality is that although all those things are true, there is a deeper reason. I am scared, we are all scared, scared to see our children suffer the emotional stress of losing the foundation they've worked so hard to build, scared to see the relationships they've fostered for so long suddenly torn apart. Scared for them to be placed somewhere new where they might lose their sense of belonging. We can't overlook how deeply the emotional stress affects children. It doesn't just fade away, it lingers when their safe place is taken from them. It shakes their confidence, motivation, and even their ability to learn. Our families' hearts are in that school. It is more than a building, it's our home. In an effort to make our voices heard, the hashtag #SavePantheron campaign was born from the hearts of our families, teachers, and students who love this school and refuse to let it go without a fight. It is our way of showing the community what Pantheron means to us. Families are sharing videos, photos, stories of their favorite moments at Pantheron. Rebecca, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about, I'm sorry for all the Instagram tags. Through this campaign, we plan to continue to let our voices and our children's voices be heard. Reminding everyone how much Pantheron means to us. Every child at Pantheron deserves to finish their school years in a place that feels like home. We're asking you, please, to keep the home alive for our children, our teachers, and the future of this incredible community. From the bottom of my heart, I am asking you to hear us and see our pain and let our children keep the school that has given them so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ayesha Brooks.
Good afternoon, Board Members. My name is Ayesha Brooks. I'm a proud parent at Pines Lakes Elementary, and I'm a proud product of Broward County Public Schools. I've attended elementary, middle, and high school in Broward County, so I know firsthand the impact that strong neighborhood schools can have on a child's life. I stand before you because Pines Lakes is more than just a school. It's a family, it's a place where children feel safe and supported and inspired. I understand the district is considering merging Pines Lakes with Palm Cove. While I know the decisions are not easy, I want to share what makes our school strong and why we deserve to stay open. Pines Lakes, we have met our enrollment goals. We have a thriving pre-K program, one of the only. Our classrooms are at capacity, and that's grades K through 8, which shows that our families continue to choose and trust our school. We have a thriving and an active PTA, I know because I'm a member of the Board. And we currently have over $11,000, and if our PTA, if our school is shut down, then we lose all the funds and we forfeit all the money and that, everything goes away. Our PTAs raise funds for our programs, events, and the improvements of our school, which are all focused on helping our kids grow. If our school is closed, also additionally, we've seen a steady growth with our parent involvement in our engagement. And this is proof of our strong family partnerships that define Pines Lakes. Our student body is beautifully diverse, and we also have continued thriving programs. We have a vibrant music program that excites our students. We have a growing STEM program and a competitive Lego team that we're starting for our 2nd and our 3rd graders that builds teamwork and innovations. We are... Our students, they love coming here. Our families, they feel welcomed. Our teachers are deeply invested. And I have two children who attend Pines Lakes, one on an IEP and one a High Achieving, and both have been given exactly what they need to thrive. The teachers here don't just teach, they care, they see every child's potential. So today, I ask from my heart to please keep Pines Lakes Elementary open because the school doesn't deserve... The school doesn't just serve our community, it is our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Maxine Singh, Cynthia Dominique, Jennifer Levy, and Commissioner Carol Schuhem. So if I've called your name, please go up to the mics.
Good afternoon, Board. I think Maxine is supposed to be me. Commissioner Lori Llewellyn, I believe she registered for me.
Okay, we have you on the list.
Separately? Okay, then, it's not me.
Thank you. Cynthia Dominique, Jennifer Levy, Commissioner Carol Schuhem.
Okay, I don't see Cynthia, so I'll go. Hi, my name is Jennifer Levy, and I am a parent of three BCPS children. As a mother with a child entering 6th grade at Coral Springs Middle School next year, I'm here to advocate for an autism-focused charter school on the Coral Springs Middle School campus, modeled after the South Florida Autism Charter School to address an urgent need in Broward County. Please note, this is not going to replace our cluster classes. If our cluster classes were doing their job, I wouldn't feel the need to be here today. South Florida Autism Charter would address an urgent need in Broward County. This would help fill the 1,900 seats at Coral Springs Middle School, which is currently under-enrolled, but also provide Broward families with access to a specialized autism charter, which our current system is lacking. Miami has an autism charter. Palm Beach has an autism charter. St. Lucy is getting an autism charter. Unfortunately, we have nothing comparable here, which is concerning, given that we're the sixth-largest school district in the U.S. And Florida has the highest autism prevalence in the country, with 4.88% of children being diagnosed. I particularly support the idea of a district-managed autism charter in both the North and South because for families like mine, it's not possible to commute over 45 minutes to a school since my son requires hours and hours of therapy after school. Coral Springs Middle School has a capacity of 1,900 students, currently enrolls 1024, with an increase of 49 students from projections. This school should not be considered for closure as it's one of the few Broward schools experiencing growth. The principal is on the right track, parents want this school. Penalizing the school because the building was built too large is not the answer. Combining Coral Springs Middle School with another middle school like Forest Glen will undoubtedly create additional behavioral challenges as having nearly 2,000 kids at a middle school campus is problematic with vaping and fighting. An autism charter at Coral Springs Middle provides a solution that avoids boundary changes, preserves high school feeder patterns, helps fund the campus, and offers inclusion opportunities for all students. We keep hearing parents that are concerned, saying, "Oh, an autism charter is going to segregate our kids." Well, not a school within a school, you'll have inclusion opportunities for field trips, for school special events, and for a variety of the day-to-day academics. Finally, as a family directly affected by the MSD reboundry process, I urge that the area rezoned out of MSD, to Glades be made a boundary-choice area. My oldest attends MSD now, and without this option, my daughter will be separated from her friends at Country Hills and Coral Springs Middle without the chance to remain at MSD. No city should be allowed to save seats for future construction. We learned that in kindergarten, right? We do not save seats. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Carol Schuhem. And then up next, we have Lisette Scarre and James Sparks.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Dr. Hepburn, staff, and School Board Members. Again, my name is Carol Schuhem, I'm a Hollywood City Commissioner, and I'm really here first and foremost to say thank you. I know this sometimes must feel like a thankless job, but I really want you to know that your work is so deeply appreciated by so many of us in Broward County who love, support, and demand high-quality public school education, and who know that you are all working hard to ensure that our students have exactly that. I'm also here as a Hollywood Commissioner. I am fortunate to meet so many students who are thriving in Broward's excellent school system and could not agree more with the goal to keep as many of these schools open and thriving. In particular, our middle schools. Nearby, we have Awesome Olson and Historic Attics, but I want to speak specifically about McNichol Middle School. I understand, like so many schools, there's extra space at McNichol. And I want to just assure you that the City of Hollywood's staff is working with your staff to hopefully help to fill it. Of course, I can only speak for myself, but I am aware and hopeful for some excellent partnership opportunities between the Broward County Public Schools and our city. And I know that there are many ways to get a win-win for the schools, for our community at large. Thank you again for the challenging work and the critical work that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisette Scarre.
Good afternoon, School Board Members and Community. I'm here advocating for my son, who has profound autism and urgent needs that Broward Schools are not currently meeting. Unlike my daughter, who's also on the spectrum, she is thriving in the general education setting. My son requires intensive specialized intervention beyond what the cluster programs can offer. His challenges in communication and behavior demand a tailored environment. As a parent, I'm doing everything possible to make sure he has that support in the classroom. Coincidentally, today, I was informed that the company providing the additional RBT services can no longer provide services for other reasons, which leaves me scrambling once again to get him additional services in that type of a setting. Unfortunately, this is not the first time I've had to find new support and scramble at the last minute. At only 6 years old, he's too much for the school to handle alone. Finding replacements is time-consuming and costly for our family. We're urgently needing a district-managed autism charter school, much like what South Florida Autism Charter Schools has to offer. It has the structure my son needs. This publicly-funded, district-overseen charter would ensure kids like my son, who are profound autism, get tailored education without having to leave the district. Please approve this for 2026, our children cannot wait. Thank you.
Thank you, James Sparks. And then we have Pastor Sanders, Cunia Gordon, and Jeanette Luciano.
My name is James Sparks. I want to say hello, Board Members. I want to say hello, Mr. Superintendent. I want to even say hello to staff. I appreciate the district and their staff. We had eight nights, I didn't get them all, but I think they did a good job. I'm going to just kind of speak on a little history and stuff. We got some heavy hitters coming behind me, I'm just a little country boy, so here I go. This is one of the first times since 1995 that I feel a little comfortable in what we're doing. All the years before, my community went to eight different schools on a two-block street. We all went all the way out, my kids went all the way out to Pines Middle. And then there were years that we'd be sitting around and they were trying to send us on our father because they were trying to do racial quotas. So we lived through all of that. This was one of the first times that schools in the community then come up and need to be closed, and you're working with us and trying to get some of our input. Now, we got to go a little further, Board Members. We got schools here such as Hollendale High, if you go back, Ms. Roper, you've been here a long time. Hollendale High got robbed on a lot of stuff. There's a lot of money that we need in that community. There's a lot of things we need for the school. Bob Parks was the chair, and I'll never forget, he and I didn't agree on very much. I respected him because I believe every person has their own opinion. But when Bob Parks helped get Pompano High started, if they came back and said they were shoulder supplies, Bob Parks worked out a way to get it to them. So here we are in Hollendale, we're trying to do the same thing. We're trying to put a model together. We're going to need money, we're going to need teachers. And listen, every teacher is not the right teacher for a program. And we need you guys to look at that. We got McNichol over there, we need McNichol to continue feeding to the school. And to be honest, this is one of the first times I've seen schools in other communities, and I'm going to just say it straight up, that you're talking about closing or redoing. It's always been in the black community, always. And I'm just telling you, I feel a little better. Now, I want you to keep me feeling better because I want you to go on and do the right thing. Because if you don't keep me feeling better, then I'm going to have to come back and we're going to have to talk about it. But listen, I really appreciate it. I'm going to tell you for a fact, as long as we keep up... See, what you got to realize is, you're in one district, you're in one, you're in one, and you're in one. But every kid in Broward County is in your district. So if your district is doing good, send some of your money and your needs over to the other and help the other community. And for years past, we were not getting that with the School Board Members. They only took care of their schools and their community. I got four kids, I've never neglected one kid. They might not have got what they wanted at the same time, but I didn't connect that.
Thank you.
Good morning. Oh, I'm sorry, it's afternoon, okay. Good afternoon, Board Members, Superintendent, Madam Chair. My name is Cunia Gordon. I'm an alumnus of Hollendale High School and also McNichol. And I'm a proud member of the girls' basketball team who brought the first championship here in Broward County. Two years, two years back-to-back, we brought that here at little old Hollendale. That's what we brought. I'm here to support the redefining of Hollendale Magnet High School, similar to the Pompano model. As a community leader, I'm supportive of this decision. We are asking the district, though, to please come with resources and finances. I graduated in 1978, and some of the school, the surrounding of the school still look the same. We're talking about 47 years. Some of those areas in the school are still looking the same. So we want you to please come and do the redefining, but we want you to level up. We want you to bring resources, bring finances, upgrade the fields, upgrade the students so that when they're able to go to another school, they feel proud about Hollendale High School. And right now, we can't really say that. Administration can't really say that. The principal really can't say that. And so I'm asking you to please, to please reconsider in helping the resources for Hollendale High School to be better. We want the redefining, but we want you to also make sure that money comes and resources comes with that. Our community visualizes partnerships with local businesses and industries for students that will make their life skills as they leave middle school, as they leave high school, to be more than what they can accept here in our community. Please make sure that we prepare our students for the next generation. We're talking about leaders, leaders and industries that are here in our community. We have production in our high schools that we can partner up with local stations here in the community. We have a film industry, I don't even think that Broward County has even thought about that. Let's help our students become more inclined of what is coming up with AI, computer information systems. Let's prepare our students for the next generation, the next generation of science and technology. School Board Members, we want that redefined, but we want you to also bring finances when Hollendale High is in the way of becoming redefined. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Sanders, and then Jeanette Luciano, and then Commissioner Lori Llewellyn.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair, and the Board, and to Superintendent. Let me also applaud the work that Dr. Wanza and the team has done. So I'm going to take my time to talk about building bridges for our students' future. Over the last few months, we've come together with our local mayors, with business leaders, community leaders, principals, and students to form one message. To strengthen, not separate. To redesign, not retire. Our schools, Hollendale High and McNichol Middle, are pillars of our community. Each plays a distinct yet connected role in preparing our students, not only for graduation, but also for life. Over this past month, we've had discussions that are focused on partnership, redesign, and reverence. The truth is clear. The truth is clear, these schools can and must work hand-in-hand to create a clear, community-centered educational pipeline. McNichol Middle builds the foundation, and Hollendale High advances it. Both schools deserve emphasis on targeted investment, quality staffing, and strategic marketing. They need unified support, not symbolic gestures. Hollendale High is actively engaged in redesign efforts focused on magnet-style pathways in aviation, broadcasting, robotics, and culinary arts. And McNichol serves as a feeder to those programs, ensuring and enhancing a continuity in aviation, EMT, STEM-focused pro, pro, STEM-focused programs. I want to talk about one key point that Mr. Sparks brought up. Because we understand that education and vocational programs are vital. But if we really are going to redefine the schools, there's a third part, and that's the athletic. If we are really collectively going to do this, we need visible, verifiable, undeniable evidence. Because all we've been getting is the promise, but the check didn't cash. So what we're saying, we're not asking for promises, we're asking for a real partnership. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Jeanette Luciano.
Good afternoon, everybody. As parents, it is our responsibility to think about our children's future and ensure they have access to the best possible possibilities to succeed in life. Broward County Public Schools shares that responsibility, and that's why I'm here today. I am a parent of a child of autism, and I stand before you to advocate for something we desperately need in our community, a district-managed charter school in Broward County specifically dedicated to serving students with autism, modeled after Miami Dade South Florida Autism Charter School. SVAX has become a beacon of hope for families like mine. It provides specialized, innovative educational and behavioral support tailored to the unique needs of neurodivergent students. Yet, this type of school does not exist in Broward. Our children are being left behind because of it. Here in Broward, we lack a dedicated learning environment where children with autism can receive the structured understanding and individualized support they need to thrive, not just academically, social, but socially and emotionally. We're asking the Broward County Public School System to take action, to create a school where our children aren't forced to fit into systems that weren't designed for them, but instead are placed in a setting built specifically for them, a school that will empower them to grow, learn, and lead fulfilling lives. Today, there are countless programs and magnet opportunities within the BCPS that are designed to give neurotypical students clear pathways to success. Our neurodivergent children deserve the same, those same opportunities. They deserve better. Families shouldn't have to cross county lines just to find a school that fits their child's needs. We are asking to, um, we are asking to build a future where all students, regardless of their neurological differences, are given a chance to thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Lori Llewellyn, and then Mayor Felicia Brunson, and Mayor Joyce Davis.
To the Chair. Ms. Cynthia Dominique had to leave, so she just sent me her notes. Is it okay if I just take the three minutes for her? Or would you?
Are you on the list to, did you register?
No, she is.
Okay, we usually, the person has to be here to deliver their comments.
That's why she said to ask. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. We'll try this again. Commissioner Lori Llewellyn from the city of Dania Beach. I appreciate Dr. Wanza earlier mentioning how vocal we have been in the city of Dania Beach, and I know that you are all very much aware of that. I do want to thank you and congratulate you on doing this work and really going out and trying to meet with the cities, meet with the elected officials, meet with the city managers to try to find some solutions to this very large problem. And I do understand that it's a very large problem, and it is county-wide. But it's not something that I think is going to simply go away by closing a few schools. I am hopeful, based upon the latest discussions, that Olson is no longer on the chopping block, given the fact that we have done so much work and we have aligned our, our words with action. We have, we are investing millions of dollars into the park next door and trying to do what we can to be good partners with the school board in order to make sure that our schools remain. But we were even named as your community partner of the year this past year. And next thing I know, I see that Olson is back on the list of schools that could potentially be closed. It's very frustrating for us as a city to see that, to do the, to do the work and put the effort in and really try to work with the school board, with everybody, trying to make this happen for our community. I can only imagine what it's like for our parents and the students. Because each year, they think their school is safe. And then the next thing you know, they're seeing an article in the newspaper, or hearing something on TV, or hearing from their neighbors, or hearing from their teachers that their school might be closing. It's hard. We heard, I know we heard one parent here earlier who was very upset about having to move her child, potentially move her child. That's one parent. There are lots of them out there. And it's just not healthy for these kids to have to go through this over and over again. So we need to not continue this. It, it, it's going to continue happening. You're going to continue to see less and less enrollment when you see that schools are being put up there as, you know, potentially being closed. It makes parents move their children to other schools. So then those same schools continue to decrease their enrollment. So we need to fix that problem and stop this vicious circle that keeps happening. Something else I just want to suggest to you, I know you are trying to develop these partnerships with the cities, and I do appreciate that, and I think it's the best thing that you can do. Because your cities out here really care about these kids and really care about their schools, and they want to make sure that, that they thrive. I've heard a lot of success stories here today. I've heard a lot of really positive things that are going on in our schools. I would love to see the schools partner with the cities to celebrate those, to celebrate those successes, advertise them, market them, brand them. And then maybe you'll get more students who want to enroll in Broward County Public Schools. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mayor Felicia Brunson.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board, and Superintendent. I am Felicia Brunson, Mayor from the beautiful city of West Park, and glad to be here with you today. I also want to thank our very own Valerie Wanza and all of the hard work that she has done through this process, West Park's own. Just had to throw that in. I, I stand before you today to talk about the redefining. For West Park, growing up in the city of West Park, our students, including myself, have had the opportunity to go to schools pretty much all over the county. But there are some particular schools that if you are from the city of West Park, or if you are from South County, you know that those are your schools. Whether you went to them or not, you supported those schools. And so those schools are Watkins, McNichol, and Hollendale High. Again, the unique thing about the city of West Park, our students go everywhere, but we have a large percentage of students that do attend all of those schools. So I am asking for you to redefine those schools. Because for generations, you know, your schools were simply defined as a place where children came to read, to write, to learn. But today, education is far more. It means much more than just that. In this ever-changing world, we have to redefine what a school truly is to keep up with the world. And so we recognize that it's not just a building, but it's a living, breathing part of our community. And so if we want our children to thrive, we have to be able to move with the times to ensure that they are thriving. We understand that education is the anchor of stability and identity in a community. Our school is the heartbeat of our community, particularly in West Park. Everybody is family, and you support family, except during times when we play against each other. But other than that, we have memories, we have milestones. My parents went to these schools. My family, my aunts, my uncles, everyone, we all went to these schools, so we support these schools. We want them to remain within our community because it preserves that sense of identity and that sense of pride. Anything else would disrupt that connection and weaken our community's collective strength. So schools carry legacies, so we ask you to allow us to continue that legacy and redefine our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Mayor Joyce Davis, and then we have City Manager David Lynch, and Felicia Schuman coming up.
Good after, good afternoon, school board, Superintendent. Especially want to give a great thank you to Dr. Wanza as well, and our school board member, Maura Bowman. I'm coming to you not just as the mayor of the city of Dania Beach, but 20 years ago in 2005, I came here to start my career as a Broward County Public Schools teacher. And so you all know that are, who are in the field of education, once an educator, always an educator, that will always be my perspective when looking at our community and leading our community. But what I will tell you is that I'm listening to my colleague and in listening to the parents and to our communities as we have been through this process, not once, but twice, that our awesome Olson Middle School is now on this redefining school list. I was a middle school, eighth-grade language arts teacher, and I know how pivotal that age group is. And so we have built a family, not just a community, but a family in the city of Dania Beach. We have invested more in our school system, in, in Broward County Public Schools financially, emotionally, and with our partnerships. We are, there's, what I want to do is tell you a quick story from a teacher's perspective, though, and I'm going off my script here. But three years ago, our awesome Olson Middle School students came to the city of Dania Beach, and they sat, and they had a line just like this, and they spoke to us as the city commission. We had a seven-acre property that was adjacent to Olson Middle School, and we asked our students, what is it that you would like to see in this seven-acre property? And they had two different teams, they gave their ideas, they proposed, they argued, they had PowerPoints, they showed us that they wanted a community center, they wanted track and field. And I will tell you that in this $8 million park, their ideas have come to fruition. What they have done, what they have planned, what they have invested in, is now becoming a reality in the city of Dania Beach. And that's what it's about, real-world education. I see Lori Cirillo here from JA, and that is what, that is the future of education, when children can plan and, and see their visions come to life, that is when we make a difference. We are making a difference in the city of Dania Beach, and we would like for you to look at us as the example to lead the partnerships between cities and the school board moving forward. We are the municipal partner of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager David Lynch, and then we have Felicia Schuman and Don Goldstein.
Yeah, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Superintendent, board members, staff, and the rest of our audience. My name's David Lynch. I'm the city manager in Pembroke Park, and we've had a lot of municipal officials come up to the, the dais today and talk about how important these schools are. In our town, we're a small town, and Watkins and Lake Forest are an essential part of our local economy, our culture, and providing vitality to our community. We've gotten a lot of support from Maura Bowman, and we thank her for the support in our community. But long before some of these currents came forward, our commission committed itself to be a strong municipal partner with the schools. I'm going to talk about just a couple of those things. One is that one of our commissioners brought forward, the commission unanimously supported a financial literacy program, which our town created as part of municipal government. The kids go from the elementary school over to our town hall, where we've assembled bankers, and they teach the kids financial literacy. And here's the cherry on the sundae. When the kids finish that class, our local government, our town government, gives them a $100 bank account, one of our local, local financial institutions. These kids open their eyes, they turn to their mom and dad, and they think about what their life's going to be like as they manage that $100 into maybe something even grander. Secondly, before all this came down of this level of concern, our mayor Jeff Jacobs sponsored a measure which was unanimously supported by our commission to do something that no other town in Broward County has done. When the school lunch program presented itself, one that was underfunded, and therefore some kids wouldn't have fully paid for free lunches, our town is writing a $100,000 check every year to subsidize that lunch program so that no kid in our town at Lake Forest or over at our Watkins Elementary School has to pay anything for lunch. Last, I wanted to mention is something that was up on the board in strategies. One of the things that was listed was the idea of our town having an interest in some kind of community program. Our commission is fully committed. We want to open up a senior citizen program, and I've already bent through the wing over at Watkins. It's absolutely perfect. We don't have a senior program yet. I think we're about to with your help. And believe me, our community is committed to the schools, and we appreciate the hard work you've been doing, and all the municipal officials. We join together to encourage you to recognize how these municipal governments are committed to making these schools thrive. We're only as good as our schools, and we want to keep them strong. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Felicia Schuman and Don Goldstein.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hepburn and esteemed board leaders. My name is Felicia Schuman. I'm from Coconut Creek, Florida. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding redefining Phase Two and the feedback from our community conversations. As the district consider potential school closures, I urge you to make these decisions with the utmost care and deliberation. Schools are more than just buildings. They are the heart of our communities. They provide stability, educational opportunities, and social support for students and families. Closing a school without fully considering its impact can disrupt neighborhoods, increase travel burdens, and fragment community cohesion. Community feedback shows that many schools offer specialized programs such as STEM, dual language, and Cambridge curriculum, which must be preserved or thoughtfully relocated to ensure equitable access for all students. Enrollment data and facility condition indices should guide decisions, but the social and educational impact cannot be overlooked. I respectfully ask the board to carefully weigh these factors, prioritize equity and community needs, and ensure that any changes strengthen rather than weaken our schools and neighborhoods. Thoughtful, deliberate actions now will benefit students and family for years to come. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We have Don Goldstein, then Dr. Anthony Sanders, and Catrice Johnson.
Hi, good afternoon. I just wanted to share this sweet picture. I'm a little biased, but I'd like you to meet this little seven-year-old boy. This is my son Langdon. Also, he's in second grade at the Broward County Public School, Parkside Elementary. Also happens to be nonverbal autistic, so I am here as his mother and advocate for him and what he needs. So good afternoon. My name is Don Goldstein, and I'm the mother of a seven-year-old nonverbal autistic boy named Langdon. He's in second grade at Broward County Public School System, but he's working at a pre- kindergarten level, not because of his ability, but because the system simply lacks the training, resources, and specialized programs to meet his needs. Right now, his classroom has become more of a babysitting environment than a place of learning, and the educational gap is widening each year. Langdon deserves so much more, and under the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, he has the right to a free and appropriate education tailored to his needs. In Miami Dade and Palm Beach Counties, South Florida Autism Charter School has proven that a specialized district-managed charter model works, and it changes lives. Families here in Broward, especially around Coral Springs, desperately need the same opportunity as none currently exist. opportunity as none currently exist. A district-managed charter, a district-managed charter school for autism would give children like Langdon access to education, therapies, and individualized attention they deserve so they can grow, learn, and reach their full potential. Broward County must replicate this model here to ensure the equitable, evidence-based education for our children as guaranteed under the ADA. Our kids deserve more than excuses. They deserve opportunity, dignity, respect, and a school that truly works for them. Please help make that a reality. Thank you for considering this urgent need for our community's most vulnerable and extraordinary children. I implore you to shadow our children for a day in the life of the public school system to get an inkling of what we deal with as families and parents, and that what we have to advocate for on a daily basis and what is sorely lacking. We wouldn't be asking for a charter school and alternatives if the public school system was providing the appropriate resources and education to our ESC community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Anthony Sanders. Catrice Johnson, and then we'll have Teresa Johnson and Mary Firdig.
Hello to Dr. Heltburn, school members, Dr. Wanza, and the redefining, right sizing team. My name is Catrice Renee Johnson. I'm a community organizer with Faith in Florida. I am a proud product of the Broward County Schools and a very proud graduate of Hollendale High School. I would say the year, but I'm, go ahead. And I want, in the right sizing and redefining of the current endeavor, I am here today on behalf of District One, particularly Hollendale High School and McNichol Middle School, where there is great innovative learning and learning experience in process, in progress even today. In recent visits and tours, I was able to personally experience and witness the improvements and excellence of these two schools. I was even, even able to fly a simulation plane, where I'm waiting on my wings, and if anybody want to ride, just come and see me after this. But I was able to have that experience at McNichol Middle School in their aerospace technology program. These two schools are intricate part of our neighborhood schools, families, and community. I know that strong, the strong impact and value of having quality educational opportunities in our own community, and I stress, in our own community. As a part of the redefining process, I highly favor and support the full magnet high school operating, high school operating on a four-day-week schedule using the framework model of Pompano Beach. In order to give Hollendale High an equal fighting chance of survival, it needs to start with upgrades and investment of money and budget priorities in facility conditions and infrastructure. To be fair, to be fair, this school needs immediate attention. There has been no upgrades in Hollendale High School since its, since its inception in 1973. Let me let that rest right there. And I hear the buzzer, I just want to end with this question right here. Is there anything good that could come out of Hollendale, the city of Hollendale? Here I am.
Thank you so much. Teresa Johnson, Mary Firdig, and then we have City Manager Mark Lubelski, Erin Gole, and Dr. Bernard Jennings up.
Is it possible for me to switch with Nicole Morris? She has to leave, and I'm planning to stay, so.
Go ahead, Nicole. Yes.
Okay, Nicole Morris, Coral Springs. I just have a quick suggestion. Looking at how this has been done the last two years, I think it would make sense if we did regional approaches, where in the northwest, you just did one sweeping change, southwest, one sweeping change, rather than spot checking. Last year was Coconut Creek Elementary, this year that feeds into Margate, now Margate's under-enrolled. Now, next year is going to be Coral Springs High School, because all of these changes are, these are feeder schools into Coral Springs High School, they're at 73% of their capacity. If we just did one sweeping change in the quadrants, I think that would be less heartburn for everyone. Last month, it was mentioned that the C4 boundary choice proposal could not go to community conversations because it was not advertised on the flyer as a potential proposal, so imagine our surprise when we got to Coral Springs High to find out that Lyons Creek had been added to the conversation. There was no one there to speak for Lyons Creek, we hadn't come with any information on Lyons Creek. Since then, I've looked at the, the feeders for Lyons Creek. You're going to take Forest Glen that has a 100% feeder pattern to Coral Springs High School, and you're going to split them between Lyons Creek and Coral Springs Middle School. Coral Springs Middle School feeds into Coral Glaze and Coral Springs High, and then Lyons Creek feeds into Monarch. So now they're going to have a four-way split feeder pattern. This just, it doesn't make sense to me. Coral Springs Elementary, I've been talking about Coral Springs Elementary since last year, they are the most under-enrolled school in the district. We were told at the regional meeting, we weren't going to talk about Coral Springs Elementary, but now it's on, on a list. So tell us what you're going to do. They could easily combine with Parkside, the capacity is there. Wear in purple for my friends today who are here to support an autism charter school inside Coral Springs Middle School. They would much rather have, that school has spoken, they would much rather have an autism charter or, or something similar inside the school rather than giving them another 500 or 600 kids. We just had major disruptions with behavior there. Last year Coral Springs PD was out there every single afternoon because they couldn't manage dismissal. So giving them another 500 middle school kids doesn't seem like a good answer. On September 24th, the city of Coral Springs sent an email to, to the board and the superintendent requesting that a clear process and timeline for creating a boundary choice area for C4 was established. The district has said they don't have the desire, staff has said they don't have a desire to get into a turf war with Coral Springs and Parkland. This shouldn't be the case, we're just asking for the seats that were taken from them two years ago that are now being given away in reassignments to, to be given back, to establish a choice area. I hope that someone today will, will advocate for that, because we were told we were, but now, but now we weren't, and it's frustrating. If we're going to look at a regional approach, I just want to mention that we have an over-enrolled West Glaze at 115%. You said that Marjorie Stoneman Douglas was dangerously over-enrolled at 115%, but we're not adding our over-enrolled schools in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have City Manager Mark Lubelski, Erin Gole, Dr. Bernard Jennings.
Good afternoon, Mark Lubelski, City Manager for Sunrise. My comments will be very brief today. First of all, I do want to thank the board and administration staff for their communication and their collaboration and transparency during this process. The city of Sunrise has a longstanding history of celebrating and partnering with our schools here in Sunrise. Most recently, we have partnered with the school board regarding West Pine Middle, which is adjacent to our Sports Plex Park. We're going to be investing several million dollars into some open space areas, a track, an open play, and also some pickleball that'll be a shared use between West Pine and the city of Sunrise. When we heard about the, the consideration of the school closures in Sunrise, we had, we did some tours of both West, West Pine and also Bear, and we do believe that there is an opportunity for the city to further partner with the school board to take over some of that space for community programming. So my, my message in here today is that we're here to partner, expand our relationship, and hopefully work with you to take over some spaces at one or both of those schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin Gole.
Thank you. I am so pleased to see this room so full today. This redefining process is so critical for our district, and in order for it to be successful, it is vital to have many deep and at times hard, community-driven conversations. There are some proposals in the presentation that grew out of this kind of community effort. I have been lucky to experience the excitement building within the school communities around the sports academy at Bennett, Sunrise, and Fort Lauderdale High. Similarly, it has been inspiring to see the enthusiasm at Stranahan High School for the proposed maritime trades and culinary programs. These kinds of ideas rooted in innovation and directly aligned with community needs and local workforce demand are exactly the kinds of programs that will thrive and remain relevant for years to come. As you make decisions throughout the redefining process, I urge you to not only think about the immediate logistics and variables, but also about the cascading impacts these choices will have on communities and other surrounding schools. I also ask that you look beyond grade reconfigurations and focus on building programs that define a school's future, not just their structure. The programs that succeed are the ones that tap into authentic, local excitement and resources, and we see some of that here today. They meet real needs and are marketed in a way that genuinely reflects the value, not just a glossy flyer, but marketing that highlights the voices of the students and staff who are having these positive experiences, and we saw some of that at these community meetings. Utilize these student and staff ambassadors of these programs. And finally, please continue to find ways to engage communities meaningfully throughout the process, especially as we move from ideas to implementation. We know and recognize that you are going to have to make hard decisions. The district should continue current and add more avenues for information sharing and gathering. If redefining is to result in parents selecting BCPS above all of the expanding choices we are seeing, this is so critical. Please, please find ways to make the community part of the path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bernard Jennings, then we have David Sancho Parga and Samuel Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you especially, Ms. Rebecca Thompson and the Superintendent. I wear, I come here today with a couple hats. I'm the initiator of the Good Dad Act, the historic legislation in Florida that gives fathers equal rights to their children, as well as the author of Ethan's Good Dad Act, a book named after my son Ethan here. As well, I'm Vice Chairman of the Florida Memorial University Board of Trustees. I'm a proud parent of a fifth-grade student at Pines Lakes Elementary School, Ethan. I'm a member of the school's PTA, and I come before you today not only as a parent, but also as an advocate for students, teachers, and staff whose voices too often go unheard. Pines Lakes Elementary is more than just a school, it's a neighborhood anchor, is where families gather, where children discover their potential, where parents and educators come together to invest in the future to build a stability and equity and opportunity for the community. Closing this school or cutting its dedicated staff and administration would unravel the fabric of community support that has taken generations to weave. We have some staff that have actually went to elementary school there and have been 20-year employees at the school. Let me be clear, Pines Lakes is not a failing school. In fact, it shows academic stabilization, strong PTA engagement, and readiness. Our parents are financially committed, our community is deeply involved, and the school's facilities remain strong and adaptable for innovative programs like STEM, track, dual-language immersion that can drive enrollment in the future. Now compare this to Palm Cove Elementary, which faces ATSI designation, federal oversight, and targeted readiness interventions. Due to systemic deficiencies, Pines Lakes, by contrast, has not been flagged for these issues, it has proven as the base for growth and revitalization, if only given the chance. Board members, we all know that education is about more than numbers on a spreadsheet. It's about children, it's about families, and the moral obligation to have the support of communities that are fighting for their schools. The parents, students, and staff, some of the other parents are here that I'm not sure if they're speaking today, of Pines Lakes Elementary have already shown our willingness to invest their time, money, and energy. What they need now is your commitment to stand with them. Today, I ask you to reject any plan that would close Pines Lakes Elementary or terminate its dedicated educators and administrators. Instead, I urge you to seize this moment to revitalize it as a model of community-driven success in Broward County. Thank you for your time, for your leadership in ensuring Pines Lakes remains not just a relic, but a revitalized cornerstone of educational excellence for our children and our future. And I'm not sure if I can yield my last two minutes to my son. Nope, we don't have two minutes.
We love to hear student voices. Go ahead, David.
All right, thank you. Yes, my name is David Sancho Parga. I'm a father of four children who've gone through the Broward County school system, three of which are autistic spectrum. The oldest of the autistic kids, by the way, is at UF getting her a doctorate in chemistry, which is why I thought it was important that I remember, mention, there are five people who have gotten up so far to pitch a new charter school, and I think that's ridiculous. 27% of schools in Broward County are charter. They have over 10,000 students enrolled in charter schools here, which is the amount that we're missing from our schools this year. Okay? And in the next couple of years, Broward County is going to be paying those charter schools an additional $100 million plus that they say they need in addition to the referendum that we voted on a few years ago. Hundred million plus. We don't need more charter schools, and it enrages me that there's so many people getting up here trying to pitch that, especially because the supposed need for it is one that I never saw with all of my autistic children. And I wanted to also ask, with what we're talking about here with Walter C. Young Middle School, which is where I went to middle school, we're talking about closing, and one of the options that they offered was, if I understand correctly, demolishing it and building new housing? And I'm not sure I understand the logic in considering that as a possibility. If we're going to demolish the school to build housing to bring more people in, when we're demolishing the school because we don't have enough people to keep the school open? So when we bring people in with that housing, where are they going to go to school? Are we going to build a new school after that? It doesn't make any sense to me. I really loved hearing all these communities say that they want to pitch in and help out with all these schools, I think that's great. But then I hear them saying, well, we're going to use these facilities to do things like new senior centers and new community centers and things like that, and they're going to pay for that, they're going to pay the schools for that, if I'm understanding that correctly. And my thought is, if they can pay for these facilities, can they not pay to help keep the schools in their original function? I don't understand how some of these ideas are working, but I feel like we're, as has been said by some of the commissioners here, we're kicking a can down the road, we're going to have to keep closing schools unless we address the real issue, which is that we're not fulfilling the needs that the schools have right now. We're not giving them the support they need, we're not standing up for them, we're capitulating to charter schools, we're capitulating to a lack of funding that we're not fighting for, and when we should be fighting for the schools and what they need and what they've been begging for with all these people who have gotten up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel Smith, then Renata Leon, Christine Williamson.
Good afternoon, Board, good afternoon, Broward County Public Schools. My name is Sam Smith, I have a sixth grader at Coral Springs Middle School, I have two kids at Country Hills Elementary School, and Renata, my wife, had to go pick up the children, so she couldn't be here to speak as well. But I'm here to express my disagreement with rezoning of Coral Springs Middle School and Forest Glen Middle School. Education for parents, I know for myself and my, and, and our family, is first. We have education as, is, is number one, it's the number one thing. And I'll just say that Coral Springs Middle School and all schools should focus, should, for redefining our schools should be on expansion and educational excellence, and, and that's not what is in the proposal for Coral Springs Middle School and Forest Glen. Not regression and degradation of taking students and stuffing them in, God bless them, they were at the Coral Springs High School, and I think we all expressed our satisfaction with the education at both of our, our, our schools. And, and I don't think it would be good for any- And, and I don't think it would be good for any, either community to stuff these kids into Coral Springs Middle. So the proposal for rezoning Forest Glen Middle and Coral Springs Middle does not, it does just what I spoke to before, it's regression and degradation, it's not progress and focused on excellence. There's 25-plus kids in these classrooms at Coral Springs Middle School. Crowd control, as was mentioned earlier, was a problem last year, that, you know, we have police there. But we have a terrific team of educators, a terrific team of teachers, our principal, Mrs. S., in conjunction with the parents that are there, working with them, they're focused on excellence. And so Coral Springs Middle has a great team, and they're focused on educational excellence, and this wouldn't do anything for the school, it would actually degrade the school, it would be sad, it would be a sad thing. Rezoning would not, would break up the community, it would bring the kids from, it would bring the kids from Forest Glen into there, and it just wouldn't be right. Give me a couple of minutes. I would like to say that Coral Springs Middle is getting better. As I said, the team of educators and the leaders and teachers are working together to make this opportunity. High achieving educational opportunity and excellence is a community need and a societal need, not only an individual need.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
Focusing on bettering our schools and making improvements to schools like Coral Springs Middle.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Christine Williamson, and then Noel Spence. And then Michael Owen and Jackie Luskum.
My turn?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I want to say the fire chief, Chief Golden, wanted to be here, but he had a family emergency. You do have Deputy Chief Basic here, who is taller and has a pretty killer mustache as well, so that's pretty good. I want to say thank you for the work you all have done and the leadership you've shown throughout this process. The decisions presented today are not easy, but they reflect a commitment to doing what's necessary and best in the long run for our students, our educators, and our community as a whole. As a Broward County Public Schools parent, my two daughters and their cousins are the third generation in our family to attend BCPS, Flying L's class of 2000, no McDeal. I'm personally invested in the continued strength of our schools. In my professional role, I serve as an assistant chief with Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue overseeing the Training Bureau and Special Projects. It's in that capacity that I stand before you today with a deep sense of gratitude and optimism for what this next chapter represents. The opportunity to partner with Broward County Public Schools on the Seagull School property at 425 Southwest 28th Street is truly transformational. This collaboration between the school district and the city of Fort Lauderdale will create a public safety training facility that serves not just our city, but the entire region. The Seagull site is exceptionally well-suited for this purpose, located in a primarily commercial area, close to Fire Station 3, and easily accessible for training operations. Its proximity allows our units to remain close to their response areas, reducing out-of-service times and improving citywide fire and EMS coverage. This facility will allow us to move beyond temporary solutions to a modern, fully-equipped campus that supports firefighter EMS and police training under one roof. It offers classrooms, offices, and indoor spaces that will enable us to provide consistent, high-quality instruction in everything from AI-driven EMS simulation labs to live-fire, search-and-rescue, trauma care, and advanced medical courses. It could one day serve as a permanent home for public education programs in CPR, AED use, and first aid, along with growing youth engagement initiatives like our Explorer programs for high school kids. To put it in the simplest terms, though, this partnership and facility will make us better at saving lives. Beyond its operational benefits, this facility will strengthen our regional partnerships. It'll allow us to host multi-agency training exercises, enhancing collaboration across jurisdictions. And with firefighters and police officers training daily onsite, local businesses will feel a positive ripple effect, and yes, we'll be sure to keep the nearby restaurants busy, firefighters do love to eat. What makes this moment so meaningful is that it continues the Seagull School's legacy of public service. This property was built with public funds to serve the public, and through this partnership, it will keep doing exactly that. On behalf of the city of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue, I want to express our commitment to this partnership. We're ready to roll up our sleeves and work side by side with you to bring this vision to life, for the greater good of the community we all serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Luskum, Renee Silva, and Mary Restrepo.
Thank you, Jackie Luskum. And first of all, as Chair of ESE Advisory, I just want to be clear what a district-managed charter model is very different to a regular model, and I don't want anybody to feel that they're, what they've called for today is disrespected or misunderstood. I want to urge you to take seriously the appeals from the parents of students with disabilities who came here to consider a district-managed autism charter, and some specifically named which operator. I know the district is also considering a BCPS-run autism school, and I think it would be wise to do side-by-side comparisons, not for there to have already been decisions made, choices taken, and entrenched attitudes. I think it's really important that these parents have you consider fairly and fully what they're asking for. The concerns they've voiced also speak loudly. It's not necessarily because there's a, this is something that they wanted to have to do, but also the reasons that they are looking at not wanting a BCPS school, I think it's important. Also, I want to appeal for you to be mindful of how students with disabilities are even being spoken about in this process. On the redefining schools information sheets that were spread across tables in, at the redefining eight community meetings, there was a space on each sheet for programs, not a single one that I saw listed ESE programs. Also, the information on this presentation here referred to pre-K students, out-of-boundary students, magnet students, students attending charters, and students attending other BCPS campuses. But when it came to any numerics around ESE, the figure given for each school was just the number of ESE classes. These students cannot be spoken about as collective classes, they should be being spoken about individually, and I'm so disappointed to not see that number up on the list, too, for each school. In considering a district-managed autism charter, there are some myths to bust. It's a school of choice, it's not for parents who want, it's for parents who want their children there, 96 of whom currently commute to Miami Dade every day. It is parent-founded and parent-governed. It is not the usual charter setup of a fox guarding the hen house and having zero accountability. It would be collaborative, not predatory. Please explore it. Please also consider other, Nicole Maust mentioned regionalization of this process, and I think there are other disabilities to look at, too. For example, you have centers for deaf and hard-of-hearing students, where kids are having to sit on a bus for an hour and a half to two hours a day to get to the one and only center that you provide. There's a lot to pass here, and I really just want to appeal for, when you have a partner that is potentially reaching out for partnership with you, please do not snub them, but entertain them, and give these parents the consideration they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Silva, Mary Restrepo, and Nicole Marie Nunez.
Good afternoon. My name is Noel Spence. I'm currently the I-zone representative for the school advisory committee for McNichol Middle, as well as the parent rep for their feeder school, Cobert Elementary. Today, I'm here to talk to you about McNichol Middle, of course. Just to start, as we all know, McNichol is the feeder school for Howlandale High. I know it was up for consideration, possibly closing, who knows? I'm happy, we're all happy to see that we've reconsidered that idea and come to an agreement as far as recommending that we redefine by strengthening our current programming and allowing district and maybe city offices to come and utilize our school property. I just want to urge you guys to provide the resources and the money to help us strengthen these programs, because the problem at McNichol is not that we don't already have great problems in existence, it's that people don't know about it. We need to put more money into stronger marketing efforts so that other parents and people in our communities know about the programs available to them. For instance, at McNichol, we have an aviation and aerospace technology program, we also have an engineering technology program, and a robotics technology program. In those three programs, we have state-of-the-art, top-of-the-line, innovative technology, the same programs, the same tools that they're using on university and college campuses across the country. Our middle schoolers have access to those same tools in their classrooms at McNichol. That is not something that you see anywhere else in Broward County. Furthermore, the high school that we feed into, which is Howlandale High School, will be implementing and starting their aviation and aeronautics program next year. So this will provide a continuation of the education that our students are receiving at McNichol, so that they can continue on that pathway of learning about aviation, space, aeronautics, engineering, and other STEM programs. I also want to remind you that we're not just here to fight for our middle schoolers of today, but also our middle schoolers of tomorrow. Not only am I a mother of two middle schoolers at McNichol Middle, I'm also the mother of an elementary schooler at Cobert Elementary. She's currently in the STEM Magnet Program there, she is building robots, she's coding webpages, doing things that most nine-year-olds would never even think of doing or even imagine doing. Where is she going to go if McNichol changes their program, programming, or is redefined to offer a different program? Where will she go? She wants to continue with robotics, she wants to continue with engineering, and so do the other children. Let's keep these programs in our community so our children can continue on these pathways. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Noel. We had you earlier, so thank you for coming. Renee Silva.
Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, Dr. Wanza, community members, and stakeholders. As you continue to work hard to crack the redefining nut, I would like for you to consider the following: No Coral Springs schools should close. Lyons Creek Middle School was not planned to be part of the conversation for September 30th, so it should not be considered as an option. Closing Forest Glen will greatly affect the feeder pattern to Coral Springs High School. Currently, it feeds 100% of its students to Coral Springs High School, and it will make a logistical mess at Coral Springs Middle School. Also, children's friends will be scattered over three or four high schools at a time when making and maintaining relationships is vital for the development of their social The community has been told time and time again that feeder patterns and keeping communities and neighborhoods together is sacrosanct. Let's not change that now. West Glades is at 115% of capacity, while the neighboring Coral Springs Middle School could use some students. They both have or share a feeder pattern to MSD. Why not share some students with Coral Springs Middle School? Have you considered this? Coral Springs Middle School can also be leveraged to create an opportunity for autistic children to have a campus dedicated to their development. Similar models have been successful in Palm Beach and the eight counties, and they seem to have high impact and high value for the community. Regarding the boundary choice area for the families that got rezoned during C4, I'm going to say the quiet part out loud. MSD has empty seats, and it's currently enrolling students from the C4 area. I know this because I have spoken with several neighbors who, within a year after their rezoning, got the students, their children, enrolled in the school. Let us have boundary choice. School closures should be the last resort. Let's talk about redefining the board. Let's talk about, let's talk about finding resources for teachers and students, and avoid additional costs on contracts, which can help us resource the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've called Mary Restrepo, Nicole Marie Nunez, and then Mary Furtig, Gary Johnson, and Lori Salarulo are the last on my list. So if you've heard your name called, please approach the podium. Go ahead, Ms. Furtig.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to meet as communities and discuss the future of our schools. As a longtime supporter of public education in Fort Lauderdale and Broward County, it has been inspiring to see members of our neighborhoods in Fort Lauderdale and schools, communities, as well as alumni, come forward to discuss how to address declining enrollment at Bennett Elementary. For several years, we've discussed a sports academy on this site for reasons which we've previously articulated. This program would continue in our feeder pattern, we've come before you at least twice to discuss this, so I'm going to not speak on that as much, but I am going to go to Stranahan High School. Stranahan High School sits on property donated by Broward's first school teacher, Ivy Stranahan, in memory of her husband Frank Stranahan, the father of Fort Lauderdale, who ran a ferry on the river. In honor of Frank Stranahan and all of those in our community and Marine Industries, we have reached out to Marine Industries, the Marine Industries Association of South Florida to discuss creating a unique Maritime Industries program at Stranahan. I say "unique" because we don't intend to compete with South Broward High School. Maritime Industries are an $18.5 billion business, and they have an $18.5 billion regional impact, I'm reading off their webpage, 121,000 jobs in Broward County, and a $9.9 billion impact in Broward County, and I could go on and on, but you get the idea here. This is a big industry, there are many different things that can be taught, and many different courses and pathways. And we are looking, we are excited to be able to create something unique that will actually help children to graduate and get jobs while paying jobs, and support our local industries. When we were at Stranahan, since I have a few minutes, let me tell you, this district owes Stranahan High School a huge marketing campaign, and you owe them that, because if you look at what happened with what you talked about during the bond program, to sell that smart bond, you will see the decline in Stranahan. And I just thank you for everything you did through that program, but you owe, you owe Stranahan a huge marketing. And we saw how you can do that, because the students of Stranahan came to the meeting, and they spoke, and there wasn't one of us that didn't look at each other and say, you know what, put those students up on TV and everybody's going to want to send their kids here. I'm almost out of time, so finally, I want to suggest that as I look in I community and others, you strongly, you analyze data before putting any programs in which are going to draw students from under-enrolled middle and elementary schools. At least one of your proposals proposes a K through 8 in a community where surrounding elementary and middle schools are under-enrolled, and then they'll be back to you next year. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Lori Sorrello.
Good afternoon, everyone. Lori Salarulo, President and CEO of Junior Achievement of South Florida. School Board members, Dr. Hepburn, Dr. Wanza, first, I want to say thank you. This is hard work, but you have done it with strategic focus, and most importantly, compassion, and always making sure that the vision to prepare our kids for the future is front and center. So as you know, Junior Achievement is interested in continuing to build on the work that we have. have been doing together for many, many years, decades, and focusing on the secondary high school students as well as young adults. This center that we are proposing to build for you, with you, for your students, for our students, would encompass a mandate, just like Biz Town and Finance Park, for elementary and middle school. It would also allow us to expand the pre-apprenticeship, which this year put 87 students straight into the pipeline, working with your CTE people. We recruited 300 students, but we're at full capacity. It would also allow us to continue to build on the employment program that we've been working with CTE on. This summer, we put 315 students into jobs, but again, right, that limitation in capacity of space, continuing to work together on 3DE. But the center was well-received, from what I understand, I could not be there that night, but our chief program officer spoke with many of the parents in that community. They were excited about this for their children. They were also interested in how we could use this center for them, and that most excited us because that opens up so many opportunities for collaboration with other organizations who I've already started speaking with. So we might be using it for students during the day, but there's opportunities to serve our community in the evenings and on weekends. So again, we are committed. We have a donor who has committed $10 million to helping us to build this building. We have several others that we're working with who have already committed verbally, if this should work out, but the $10 million donation does have a timeline on it. I've shared that with you all. The donor has expressed an urgent desire to make this happen. It's going to be named in her husband's name, and she wants this to happen before she passes away as well. And so there is the opportunity. We are thrilled to be able to even sit down and discuss how you might want to also use this center to build on. So thank you for the opportunity. We look forward to partnering, continuing to go deep, especially for our high school students. This is where it really counts. These kids are unengaged, we know that, or disengaged, and this is the kind of education they're looking for, continuing to partner and connect them with academics and the real world. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public speakers. So now we will go to board discussion. First, I have Mrs. Alhada.
Thank you. So first, I would like to just give an overall comment. Thank you so much to everybody that came today and the elected officials. Thank you to Dr. Hepburn and Dr. Wanza and your team for all of your hard work. I do think that career training programs, wherever we can implement them into our schools, is something that is very, you know, up and coming, and that is something that we should be doing. I am on page 23, a yes to the Junior Achievement of South Florida on the North Fork Elementary School site, and I'm going to focus on District 4, and then I'd like to hear from my colleagues in your comments in your district as what you believe should, should happen. So in regards to District 4, so Coral Springs is home to 19 public schools, serving more than 18,000 students, the largest in Broward County, with 17 rated A schools, and the other school is just a few points away. I'd like to thank the City of Coral Springs. They have invested significantly in strengthening the learning environments, from a new multi-generational facility at Kiwanis Park, which will benefit Rambo Wood Middle School, upgraded pickleball courts at Coral Springs Middle School, to the recent investment of nearly 100,000 at Forest Glen Middle School for renovated tennis courts, and new pickleball courts and added seating. So thank you so much to the commissioners of Coral Springs for your collaboration with Broward County Public Schools. So Forest Glen Middle School, I'd just like to speak to some of the programs that they currently do have. They have Cambridge International School, culinary, speech and debate, journalism, yearbook, gardening, chorus, art, Spanish, peer counseling, foundations of web design, PE, leadership, global perspectives. One of the things that they've had in the past, but is not currently being offered, so my suggestion is going to be adding additional programming to Forest Glen Middle School. So to bring back the marine science and forensic science classes, as far as bringing that programming back to the school. And they've also hosted Special Olympics for the last five years, and they also have a boys' and girls' wrestling team who won the middle school championships last year. So one of the things, also Forest Glen Middle School, and thank you to Dr. Anthony Zoller, he's the chorus director, he wrote me an email and explained how Forest Glen has over 300 students enrolled in band and chorus. Their chorus has awarded middle school coral program in Broward County over the past dozen years. No other school has earned as many superior ratings at music performance assessment, nor has any school sent as many students to Allstate. They've performed the National Anthem in front of Miami Heat, Miami Marlins, Disney World 10 times, and we are, they're the only middle school in the county to offer a boys' chorus class for returning chorus students. They have four levels of band, including a jazz band for students who take two band periods per day. You know, this obviously is not a school that we're looking to, to close. So my proposal, my ask to the board is that we go back to the community, have more conversations, look to do more programming at Forest Glen. You know, maybe we're explore some type of arts magnet program. I know that there's been a lot of conversations about creating a autistic-run school, whether that's at Coral Springs Middle School, but we need to look at those options, whether it's district-run or charter-run, whatever is going to be more beneficial for Broward County Public Schools. So one of the things, I don't know if staff, Mr. Sullivan, if you were able to print out the, the middle school number of students, if we can give that to the board. So we have 36 middle schools. Out of the 36 middle schools, 19 are under-enrolled more than Forest Glen Middle School. Forest Glen is at 935 students, so 19 middle schools are more under-enrolled than Forest Glen Middle School. I think that it's ridiculous that we would even be thinking about potentially closing Forest Glen Middle School when compared to the other middle schools within the district, they are at a higher level than 19 other middle schools. So granted, can we look to add more programming, more innovation? Absolutely, yes. Would love to see that. And, and so I think my suggestion is to the board is that we go back to the community, have those conversations, and see how we could bring additional students back to the schools in Coral Springs to just help to increase that enrollment beyond what it already is. And I think that there is a tremendous amount of more other middle schools within the district that we should be, be focusing on. That is my questions, comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. So to my colleagues, as you give your comments, please keep in mind Ms. Alhada's proposal about Forest Glen. Dr. Zeeman?
Thanks, Chair. I got to start with a shout-out to my colleague. Great article, great, great article, and, and what's fascinating about Ms. Thompson's article is just that it points out what's become inevitable for the health of our school system. As we've mentioned for the past several years, we have more buildings and more campuses than we could possibly afford, and the cost of keeping too many campuses and too many school buildings and too many facilities of all kind and too much land of all kind is that we're misappropriating our resources to buildings and ground when we need to be spending money on students, and that's what we're doing again today. I just want to add something to Ms. Thompson's article, though. This year, we lost 10,000 students in Broward County Public Schools. Mr. Superintendent, how many elementary schools is that equivalent to?
Go ahead, Dr. Wanza and Mr. Beck.
It's approximately 15.
Great. In one year. So let's just center our comments on the, on the problem that we have. In one year, we lost the equivalent of 15 elementary schools. Last year, we closed one school. This year, the superintendent's proposing seven to 10, depending on how you count. I'm going to argue that there's some value in thinking very hard this year about ripping the Band-Aid off and doing more, and I'll explain a little bit more why. First, though, props to everyone involved, led by Dr. Wanza, with the community meetings. They're the best I've seen, best I've seen when we've done DoD repurposing of bases, when we've done other districts having to go through some of these similar things, and certainly the best that I've seen in Broward County for the past 10 years. We got to a lot of frank and honest discussions with the community about things that mattered, and people were getting more and more realistic about the kinds of things that we need to spend our money on. I also want to thank Ms. Paul for the FCI data. It was a lot of work to get the contractor to get that to us. Those 34 schools are going to help us make great decisions. I can't wait to get the balance of that data, but it's awesome to have that. And then lastly, just in terms of the preamble, I think that there's some value in thinking about two different sets of decisions. One decision is the school boards, which is Dr. Holness and everyone else here's got to sit down and do some hard thinking and say, "This is surplus land, this is surplus schools. We want to spend our money on the students, not on the buildings." The second decision is what do we do after we've surplus the lands? I don't think that's Broward County School Board's decision. I think that's the school board in conjunction with the community, and particularly the cities, knowing how much work they put into their planning for all the land and how much they know about development. For the autistic students that have gained so much attention today, well-deserved, I think we need to learn from Miami Dade and Palm Beach, but I think we need to learn from other districts. There are a lot more districts in the United States than just Palm Beach, Miami Dade, and Broward, and we need to come up with a really thoughtful, data-driven, parent-involved solution. It may be one central autism school with autism plus related disabilities. It may be two central, one north and one south, and four different center schools that do it for the parents who want to send their autistic kids to a school that also has Gen Ed. We have to kind of recognize the diversity of thought amongst the parents, and for what works for all students on the spectrum, not just some students. There's a lot of other things done, by the way, by this board instead of just closing schools. Programs matter. VR headsets matter. Sports academies matter. Buffing up Cambridge matters, making sure that we're delivering the kind of vocational and technical education that, that parents and students want. All of those are the kinds of changes that we're getting with Dr. Hepburn and this administration, and we ought to think a little bit about that because we are operating with much greater speed and agility than we ever had, and we're responding to what the community and the parents and the students really need, and I hope we'll continue that going forward. I think that there's other space uses that we could think about as well. We have a number of schools, even if we accepted all these recommendations, or even that plus all the ones I'm going to suggest, we're still going to have a lot of schools operating at 60 and 70 and 80% of capacity. I think that opens up an opportunity for us to think about some temporary solutions that can do things in our schools that help us achieve our strategic goals, and that's kind of a, a new way to think. In the end, though, I think we need to lean in. There are seven to 10 schools on the superintendent's list. That's not enough. If we don't make the decisions we're supposed to be making today, I don't know how much autonomy we're going to have next year to doing anything with the land that we currently can do lots of things with. I would like to see five or 10 more schools. Some ideas to consider, by the way, in terms of getting to that. I'd love to do some forward-looking demographics. Not backward-looking demographics, not snapshots of today, but in downtown Fort Lauderdale, Mora, in downtown Hollywood, both cities are adding 7,000 units, and we're blowing away the demographic projections because guess what? Families are moving there. But we've got to make sure that we solve that. That's a lot of kids in two very concentrated areas. This morning, for those of you that read the Sun Sentinel, the Galleria finally came forward with what they're doing. Nine 30-story buildings, 1,500 workforce housing units, and another 4,000 housing units on top of that, all on one site in East Fort Lauderdale. Where are those kids going to go to school? We need to think about things in the future, not just things today and in the past. I'm going to challenge the superintendent and staff to do something that they haven't done, too, which is to think about our successful schools, the ones with the waiting lists, the Pompano High Schools, the Marjory Stoneman Douglas. I know we've got spaces there, but there's going to be a big demand for those seats in the next five years as things change up in Parkland. It is Cypress Bay, it is other schools for which there's a very strong demand to go. If we can, in fact, sell some land and get capital money, could we invest in those schools that are wildly successful so we satisfy the community's demand? It's something that I haven't seen here before, but I think it makes great sense. And just so that I make sure that I make the local newspaper, I'm going to propose for the 93rd time that we sell this building, and we create a KC Wright Building and Campus at Plantation Middle School. I am tired of people looking at a glass palace and wondering why we're spending money here when we could be spending money at schools, and I can't justify it to anyone living in Broward County anymore, why we have $100 million property on the New River in downtown Fort Lauderdale. Last I checked, this is not the center of Broward County, and it's not, I don't think, an efficient use of taxpayer dollars. I'm yes on a lot of things, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you for bringing these to us. I believe, as you and I have talked, that great organizations have a bias toward action, and this represents taking real action. Thank you and your staff very much. I'm yes on Hellendale High School becoming a full magnet. I don't think, however, there's anything special about a four-day school week. I think there's something special about great teachers, great school leaders, and, and great standards, but I, I'm worried that the four-day school week is capturing a lot of people's attention, and I don't think that's what's really special about Pompano High School. I'm yes on addicts. Got to work with the community to figure out what the highest and best use is. I'm yes on Forest Glen, Plantation, Palm Cove, and Pine Lakes, Walter C. Young, Seagull, and Wyden Rogers. Not or, and. We've got to make bold moves. I think we're right on McNichol's. We got to learn a little bit more about that, and I'm also right, thank you very much, to our firefighters and our, our public service folks involved in that. I just got to tell you, someone's going to have to buy the land for us to do this. I mean, we, we cannot give away land, given the hole that we're in with resources. I hope that multiple cities come together and figure out how to buy the, the land that we have so we can do something really special there, just like we're doing for that hospital up in Parkland, if we ever get that closed. I'm no on grade expansion. We need fewer campuses, fewer schools, and fewer grades. Every time we add grades, we're compounding the problem. I'm no on moving too fast on a single-site pre-apprenticeship program. We've got to think hard about that. That's a real complex puzzle. Who, who's responsible for pre-apprentice programs? Who's responsible for vocational and technical education? A lot of people are. Broward has a big role in that. Broward College has a big role in it. The private sector has a big role in it. The marine industries runs their own. I sit every quarter with Senator Geller on the Trades Council, and there's 200 people that are working that puzzle. I think we need to know more about that before we make up our decision, and I'm also anxious to hear what the city wants to do with North Fork Elementary School. So I like all of these. I think on my list, that adds to 10 schools. I also think we should sell KC Wright, this particular building, and start a new KC Wright so that we can move to more humble space and a place where we don't make people up in Parkland drive an hour, and people on Deerfield Drive 45 minutes, and people on Pembroke-Pines Drive forever to get here. This is not the right place for Broward County Schools to be located. We've got to make sure that we're serving our students to the extent possible. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, and just so I have this correct, you are a yes on Forest Glen, Palm Cove, Pine Lakes, Seagull, and Wyden Rogers and McNichol. Did I leave anything else out?
Yes, on Hellendale.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes. Yes, on Addicts, yes, on Hellendale. And then were you a no on JA at North Fork?
I'm, I'm not a no. I just, I think we haven't squared that, that yet. We don't know enough from the city, we don't know enough about the, the entire pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs.
Are you a yes on surplus of that property?
I'm a, I'm a yes on North Fork. I'm a yes on Norfolk. Yes, I am, but but.
You just want to reexamine it.
What I don't know is, and this is a really interesting question, is the same amount of funds could put JA, very successful pre-apprenticeship programs, at lots of our high schools that have space, and that means that people aren't driving forever to get to what's now Norfolk to attend those programs because those programs are five-days-a-week kind of programs, and that's a lot of cars on the road. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, sorry. Before you start, in our comments, please consider also Dr. Zeeman's proposal on selling KCW. Thank you. And Wyden Rogers.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dr. Wanza and your team. You know, everyone has been commenting today about the great job that you all have done, and it's really true. We've been through, this is, I think, year three that I've been experiencing this. I went through it, you know, five or six years ago, and this iteration has been very excellent. I know you've been working so hard, and so I really appreciate that and all the efforts of all the staff. And I really appreciate everyone that came out. I know a lot of people left already, but the, I think that the, um, the number of people that came to speak today really shows us how invested people are in our schools and how important they are to the individual families and to the community. I know from my district, one, there's probably a lot of parents that weren't able to come today, but we had an excellent showing from our representatives, our elected officials, and from community advocates, and that just is so important to know and for everyone to see. And I, that, there are so many people out there that really care about what happens to our school, what happens to our neighborhoods. So we can't take these decisions lightly, and I don't think we can look at them just as buildings, but we are in a situation right now where we're going to have to have some tough discussions and make some tough decisions, and it's certainly not because of the quality of any school. There's a lot of forces that are working against us right now in terms of enrollment and everything else. So I appreciate having all these different possibilities for us to look into and to really try to figure out what the best way forward is for, um, for our school district. You know, each of us knows our district well, and I appreciate, I know that my colleagues are all very hardworking and that they know their district, so I'm going to focus on mine, and I'm like Ms. Alduff said, I'm going to, you know, wait to hear from my colleagues to see what their opinions are about their particular districts before I make any decision. So I'd like to, first of all, I'll start with Hallandale High. The community has been very supportive of doing a Pompano Beach-like model there, but I think you heard from them that one of the issues that has been plaguing them since the place was built in 1973 is that there hasn't been any money put into it, and so it's difficult to attract students when your facilities are not attractive. And so we have their support, but we really need a commitment that we're going to fund that proper, that program properly. I think it can be an excellent force to attract students from other, you know, from charter and from private schools as well in the south part of the county. So I appreciate the opportunity for that, but we really need to fund it. We need to make sure that the teachers are, um, are there to, and able to provide what they need to for that program. And I, we also, I think we don't need to absolutely replicate what's happening in Pompano. Pompano is Pompano. The south side is the south side, so we can, you know, take the community recommendations in terms of partnerships, the kinds of industries that are in the south side of the county that would be useful partnerships for us to have with our students so that they can join our local workforce when they get out of school. I really appreciate Pembroke Park once again stepping up to be an excellent partner. They are funding our school lunches at both Watkins and Lake Forest Elementary so that none of the kids have to pay for for school lunch, and they've stepped up again and want to take space in Watkins Elementary to start a senior program. And I think that there is such a synergy there with the students because the seniors can read to the students, the students can read to the seniors. There's all kinds of things that can be done, interactive in a programming like that, so I think that's a perfect fit, and I am just so grateful to Pembroke Park for coming up with that solution and being a great partner. At McNichols, again, there were, in talks with the City of Hollywood, I've met with Assistant City Managers, Dr. Wanza has, I don't know, Superintendent, but there are some really good ideas that are being proposed for that, and, you know, you hear from, this is a really important school for the south side of the county. There isn't another middle school that really serves that, so to be able to continue to keep that pipeline going from McNichols to Hallandale High, I think will be very important. Also, in the Hallandale High, we have to remember to keep a certain number of students from our local boundary reserved for this, for Hallandale High. Addicts Middle School, I support having the technical school and having other, you know, like workforce training. I think that's really important. I think that that community will really benefit from that, and I think they will come to it and they will appreciate it. So I support that. And, um, and then Olson Middle School, you know, we've said this on multiple occasions, but the City of Dania Beach has been such an amazing partner for us. They came with a solution to do a partnership. They're building a state-of-the-art facility, athletic facility next to Olson Middle School, which our students will be able to use during the day and that the community will be able to use in the evening, and they're also going to take some of the space in Olson Middle School that will allow them to do a team program after school, which will also be serving our students at Olson, particularly because right now they get out of school very early. We might want to, you know, explore that, not being the case for next year, but that's another topic for another day. You know, I'll be interested to hear everybody else's opinions about the autism school and maybe have a little bit more of a side-by-side comparison of what that would look like as a charter, a district charter versus a district run, and what, um, you know, there's, there's kind of a competing voices here between the southwest and the northwest that seem to be interested in having this model. So is that something that we would only have one in the whole county, or is that something that we could do a school within a school in two different?
So to help with the conversation that I expect from from all the board members, just FYI, at the next redefining workshop, we will be bringing a side-by-side comparison.
Okay.
Just so the board has a full understanding of the benefits or even the detriment, just to compare and contrast district-operated versus a district-managed option for both so that you are well-informed, so you can provide some guidance on what next steps we should pursue, and also the specific schools that could possibly be in the north or in in the south, because we don't want parents all the way in the north have to worry about coming all the way down south. And also additional information, we plan on serving the parents that would be, their student will be eligible for such a school to get, glean more insights. We're going to provide as much information as possible at the next workshop for the board so we can get some direction on where to go next for what option to exercise, or if it's both, or if it's one or the other.
Okay, thank you. So just, you know, some kind of broad things I think we really need to look at, just conversations we're having with, about AI technology, where the world's going. I think that, again, and I've said this many times, but technical programs, vocational programs, trade programs, this is something that our public schools are uniquely situated to provide, and I think it is so important that we invest in that. That is going to distinguish us from all of the other choices, and I think that's where we need to be making investment. I also think that, you know, we've traditionally been a county of magnet programs, and I think we need to look at how we're doing that a little bit differently, localized programming so that we have it situated into regions so that we can, and that would allow, and also streamlined program. You know, there's feeder patterns that don't make sense, and we need to do that, too. We're going to save money doing that. We'll save busing, you know, reduce busing routes and costs. That's all very important because this is a big-picture thing. This is not just closing schools. We really need to figure out how we're going to save money, and we have to be serious about it. The community has spoken. I don't think they have the stomach to come back year after year to beg for the lives of their schools, so we need to really be prepared to make our decisions. I think this year, this is the third year that we've been having these same conversations, and we need to really be, get serious about making all these changes so that we can move forward without having to keep revisiting this every single year. And finally, since we're talking about closing our schools, everyone's coming out to talk about it, I am very much looking forward to seeing what we are doing as a district to cut our costs so that we can show that we are also participating in the process as our communities are sacrificing and being impacted by this. We need to show that we're serious and that we are doing everything we can to reduce our budget so that we are running to align with the number of students that we have now rather than 10 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. So just so I have this correct, I didn't hear any new proposals from you, correct? Correct, okay. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Chair, and I hope my colleagues bear with me because I will be a little bit more long-winded, especially because the majority of the proposals are affecting District Two. So I think this is incredibly hard discussion that we're having today. So before I go into my questions and the data behind these proposals, I want to start by thanking our parents, our students, our teachers, our principals, and community members for reaching out to me and my colleagues and advocating for your schools. I especially want to thank the individuals that came all the way from District Two to speak for your schools because KCW is not an easy location for us, and it's also a very difficult time, especially for parents and staff members to come out and speak. But they made sure that their voices were heard through their emails they've sent to the board, through the virtual town halls that I hosted, and also being the most well-attended town halls we had in the district altogether. And I just want to encourage my colleagues to make sure they're watching all the recordings of the town halls of I have for the entire districts so you can hear directly from my community. After visiting every school in District Two, I've seen firsthand that each one is a special home for its students, filled with teachers making an incredibly impact and principals who inspire their staff to always put teachers, students first. And because I've spent time in these schools, I understand how deeply connected our families and staff are to them. These are not just buildings. They're places filled with memories, friendships, and pride, and this is all happening through no fault of their own, not our students, parents, or staff at the school. So while I think we can say that the decision is difficult for us as board members, it's truly the community, the families, the students, and the staff who have to live with them. You're the ones who have to tell your fourth grader that their final year at their beloved elementary school will now be spent somewhere new, or your sixth grader who just found their footing at their, at their middle school that they're going to have to start all over at a new campus. We won't be in the room with teachers who have to pack up their classrooms, or with office staff wondering where they go next, or when principals have to face their parents with the news that we closed their school. I think it is incredibly important throughout this conversation to recognize that. So how did we get here? There have been warning signs for years, but the previous school board and district did not act. I don't believe this was out of malice, but because it is incredibly hard to look at families and teachers and principals in the eye and say that our district, as it is currently operating, isn't sustainable, and at the same time, we need to take accountability. We didn't adapt quickly enough to the changing educational landscape, the growth of taxpayer-funded vouchers, the expansion of charter schools, and the shifting enrollment patterns. And we consistently under-invested in maintaining our buildings and programs in ways that could have brought our families back and kept the families we have. So today, it is this board's responsibility and our superintendent to finally face this reality head-on. Since I have been elected, there have been several conversations that we have had as a board to direct the superintendent and his staff to find cuts, but it isn't enough. We have been making cuts just to stay afloat, not to make better investments in our schools, and in many cases, our students are already feeling the impact through larger class sizes and fewer programs. Going forward, we need to make strategic, student-centered decisions that protects what matters most: smaller class sizes, strong extracurriculars, and safe and supportive learning environments. Our focus has to remain on what happens in the classroom, not the next new initiative or gimmick, but the real work of teaching and learning that changes lives. So before we get started in specific proposals, I would like a summary of what cuts we have made at the district level before we are looking at closing schools. Dr. Hepburn.
Thanks for the question, Ms. Thompson. That's actually a follow-up. I don't have that information in front of me. That one involved the last two years since I've been here of cuts in the, having a brain freeze on our org chart. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. On our org chart, plus some cost savings and getting rid of certain contracts and programs, but we can provide that in the follow-up. I don't have that information in front of me.
So are we looking at selling land?
Whatever pleases the board today. This is what this discussion is about. We are looking at.
Sorry, can I cut you off?
Yes.
Because I think it's important that we have already looked at surpleasing land in our community.
Yes, that's correct.
Because there's this dialogue out there that we're not looking at selling off our additional property, that we haven't closed buildings.
Yes, that is correct. We are in direct negotiations with Broward Health with a piece of land up in Parkland, and we are surpleasing two of our admin buildings, TSSC Annex and the main TSSC building, and if there's any other recommendations based on the current presentation.
Thank you. I just think it's important that there's that information out there that we are looking at cuts to the district level because our community members aren't hearing that, and I think that's because we don't generally need community input to close a staff building, but we are doing that as well. And I just want to echo my colleague Ms. Bowman's points that we need, that if we're asking our families to make these sacrifices, then we need to be prepared as a district to make some really hard choices to our central system. And so now to specific proposals, so the Sunshine Fairway and the Pines Lakes-Palm Cove consolidation. I would really like to hear from staff if we continue forward with those proposals. How are we choosing between schools?
Go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
So, thank you, Mrs. Thompson. So the first thing we have to consider is which facility, obviously, can accommodate combined populations, one, facility condition, two. Those are the two main things, right? So when you look at Sunshine and Fairway, we know that both schools are located, I'm going to say like in the same block, if you will. One's on the north side of Miramar Parkway, and one's on the south side. So we would have to look at capacity. We would have to look at facility condition. Those would be two of the, you know, largest contributors, and then obviously, if it's, the boards will that those are two schools that we continue to have conversation. We will obviously, you know, listen to the community, but we also have to look at capacity, facility condition would be two of the largest drivers.
So I would make a comment that I think we also need to look at what families are already choosing that school and not going to charter, because if you were to close one, where the majority of kids are choosing to go to that school that are neighborhood kids, and the other and the other one may be larger, but the community is already choosing not to go to that one as much. I think that needs to be a factor in our conversation with that.
Thank you.
Same with, I want to say parental involvement as well, though I do know that communities, for many different reasons, aren't necessarily involved in the PTA. So I don't think that should be a hindrance. But I do think looking at what communities are choosing charter already and making sure that we don't accidentally push them to charter schools, especially because in my district, there is plenty of charter school options. I also want to know, because when I talk to the city, there is interest in partnering with the Senior Center for Pines Lakes. What happened with that?
Go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
So we did have a conversation with the city manager and the assistant city manager, and we are scheduling a visit. Unfortunately, I've been kind of busy. So-
You went what?
We are scheduling a visit. I want to thank the Legislative Affairs Department. In fact, they sent an email, I want to say yesterday, making sure we coordinate the date and time. So we're gonna schedule a visit to actually go out and look at the Pines Lakes facility because as we know, that's the facility that is adjacent to the Senior Center. And they were looking at potentially utilizing, partnering with us to utilize some space on the Pines Lakes campus for partnership with the Senior Center.
So then if we continue with this proposal, but then there is a better opportunity for partnership with the city, would then both schools stay, like what would happen with that proposal if we have at this workshop said we wanted to close one of them?
So, if I may, I want to draw what I believe what we asked, that the staff asked. We're not asking which school to close today.
No, I understand, but, so the proposal is to consolidate schools, correct?
Right. So we would have, so if these two schools remain in the conversation-
Okay.
Then we will definitely have all of the information, consideration, input from the walk from the city. We'll have the regional meeting that'll be at Miramar High School. And then all of that would factor into what would eventually become proposals for the Boundary Committee to consider and for the superintendent to make final recommendations to the board.
Okay. And then, so moving on to Glades Middle School, I do think there's a very compelling argument to convert Glades Middle into a technical college, especially because there's strong municipal support. There's also strong business support. It is something that is lacking in the west side of the county. However, I do have some concerns and a question. Is it possible to have the technical college on Glades campus while maintaining it as a middle school? Did I stomp you?
No, you didn't stomp me. I would be concerned about having that level, that age level of student on a technical college campus. And we have more than enough current waiting lists for a technical college to fill that campus up, plus more. Our only limit with our technical colleges is space. The demand is high. A lot of collaboration for business partners. Shout out to Fort Lauderdale Great Alliance. They constantly meet with us about industry needs and demands. But yeah, I would be concerned if we had middle school students and technical college campus students on the same campus.
Thank you. And so a lot of families will choose Glades Middle School because of their Cambridge program. So how will programs like the Cambridge Academy be maintained? Because a lot of families that are school choice and chose it for that reason. So where would the Cambridge students go?
I'm gonna say this right here. Cambridge today and tomorrow won't be a unique program to an individual school. Cambridge is, for middle schools, will be district-wide eventually. You do have a lot of middle schools offering it now. The whole concept around a Cambridge magnet is gonna be obsolete pretty quickly because it's just the way we do business when it comes to accelerated opportunities moving forward. So that type of coursework will be available to those students if they go to another school.
Okay. And then the major, there is a large population of out-of-boundary students. So how will these families be looked after to prevent the displacement if their school is closed? And will they receive priority in future school choice lotteries?
And I'll let Dr. Wanza kind of provide information on that because it's the same thing for us when we went through the Broward Estates transition, where we had a lot of, I'd say the majority of the students were actually out of boundary for Broward Estates. And you can go over, Dr. Wanza, how we took care of those kids.
Thank you, Dr. Hepburn. So you're spot-on. Approximately half of the student population at Broward Estates were students from outside the boundary. So what we would do is whatever decision is made, then we would work with families around unique choices and unique needs of families. We worked with the Broward Estates community with, you know, school choice options. And so it would just be meeting with families, looking at, you know, what their unique situations are, and doing personalized services.
Thank you. And then on to the expansion of K through eights, since you're recommending, I believe, five. So I would, I know we talked about this earlier. I would just like you to clarify for my colleagues. When you say that you're looking at five, do you mean that we're gonna have five new K through eights?
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
So, thank you, Ms. Thompson. One of the things that we know, and you kind of alluded to it in your opening comments, was the K to eight model is something that is desired, you know, by many families. And that's why they made other options outside of Broward County Public Schools. So when we look at, if the board so chooses that we are actually going to offline transition Glades Middle from a traditional middle school, then we have to look at what we're gonna provide to families for the middle school grades in that area. So once you, once, if Glades Middle is no longer a traditional middle school, now you have Silver Trail, if it, you know, you have New Renaissance. And so many families would not want that option. They would ask, and we have heard, that they would want to potentially extend the grades. So we looked at the elementary schools west of I-75 so that they have the option of remaining at their elementary school with the extended grades, or if they wanted the traditional middle school model, depending on where they lived, it would be either Silver Trail or New Renaissance. And so that's why we would look at extending the grades of those elementary schools so that the parents do have the option. As we have the conversation, it may not be as many because more parents may say, no, I want the middle school option. So it may not be as many, but at least we want to recognize that we know that that has been something that that community in particular has been desiring for quite some time.
So I would just like to give my opinion on this. I don't believe that there's capacity in the community for that many. I would say maybe one, potentially two, depending on what the community says. Because I'd like to remind my colleagues, Coral Cove and Silver Shores are already a K through eight. So that would create seven in that community. And the reason we're looking at closing schools in my district is because of lack of students. So I think that would just continue to hurt the middle schools that remain. And then I would also, as we pursue the K through eight, there's an issue, which I'm sure you and Mr. Strauss know about already, but about the pickup times at schools. So I've had principals who are being considered to be K through eights reaching out and saying that they don't want to be a K through eight if they, if this issue wasn't resolved prior. So it's the elementary kids being picked up at two, and then the middle school kids being picked up later, having that shared dismissal time. So can we get an update on what's happening with that?
Go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
So I know that Mr. Strauss has been working diligently, he and the staff in the South Region Office, and he can probably give that update. But what I will say, and I had the conversation with my colleagues, that while we go and visit other places, we do have a school right here in this district that has been doing that model successfully since its inception. So we probably need to study what Beachside is doing because we've never had that complaint from them. So we need to study what they're doing because they have been doing a K eight model with the same dismissal time for K through eight since they opened in 2010. So Mr. Strauss and his team is gonna, you know, work with them. And then we will obviously initiate what are the appropriate steps to bring resolution to the concern.
So if this moves forward with the board, I would like that resolution to come with that idea-
Yes.
-because I can't support a K through eight expansion without knowing that they're gonna be properly taken care of.
Thank you.
So then moving, and I also think with that K through eight expansion, we had Ms. McNabb at Glades bring up that a lot of our elementary schools are not equipped for middle school students. So how are we gonna support that six through eight students in a K through eight as well? So moving on to Walter C. Young. There are two proposals before my colleagues and I. One would be closing. So I want to talk about that first. So as we heard, the city of Pembroke Pines owns that land. They also own the library that Walter C. Young is using, which lease is up actually next year. So if we main, so the library lease, but not our campus. So if we maintain it as a campus, we need to start looking at that issue. Just from my colleagues' knowledge, the commission and the city manager have publicly stated that they are not interested in expanding their charter schools. But is there a way that we can legally put that in a contract if we were to return that land to them, that they aren't allowed to put it in Ms. Jack Adams? They can't put a charter or charter-shaped thing in that space?
To the Chair. So we would have to take a look at the specific restrictions that you would want to put in any contract that you have with them. I can't say as I sit here, yes definitively, because as we craft contracts, sometimes we discover that certain things can be done, cannot be done. Maybe there's an alternative way of doing it, so...
A charter-shaped thing?
Yes.
So I think that that is something I think we would want to protect ourselves with if we do go forward with closing Walter C. And then I do have concerns with closing Walter C. because it would be a loss of a traditional middle school. And Pines Lakes fought very, very hard to make sure that their dual-language program had a continuation into the middle school. And if we close it, where do all those kids go? And I know you're gonna say, well, we're proposing a three through eight. However, that's gonna have a dramatic impact on their, on Lakeside, which has a very strong dual-language program. So I guess two questions in that. If we were not to make it a three through eight, and then we were to close Walter C. Young, where would the families that want a strong dual-language middle school go?
So if we, let me parse that out and take it in, okay? So if we close Walter C., the, what's proposed is to split the boundary, and the students would go either to Silver Trail or Pines Six through Twelve. So then we would have to make some programmatic considerations around, will a dual-language, can Silver Trail and Pine Six through Twelve support, deliver, you know, with all the components, a dual-language academy, that, or, I'm sorry, a dual-language program, right? So that's the first part of if we were to close Walter C. altogether and it's no longer an option. If Walter C. remains open, I don't think that it would necessarily have a negative impact, if you will, on Lakeside because it, because it's more than dual-language that's being proposed to be offered there. And it would also ensure that both Lakeside and Pines Lakes have that middle school component. Just something to consider.
And so a third through eight you would test into, or what, what would that look like?
So for the gifted academy part, that would obviously require some type of assessment, if you will. But the dual-language would necess, would not require a test-in option.
Okay. And then, so for Panther Run, I know we are gonna come back with more information about the autism center to another board, so I will leave my comments there. However, I think I'm interested in keeping Panther Run on the list as a potential full center or to have a school within a school. I think we really need to consider the impact of it because what I don't want to happen is tell my Panther Run families that their school is safe because we opened up the school within a school, and then next year, we come back and say, just kidding, this is not sustainable, your school is closed. My community just can't do that anymore. So then I have a couple more questions, and then I'm done. Just in general, I've had a lot of staff reach out. So the staff members that are not tied to students, because we've been telling families that teachers will follow the students, so our school counselors, our reading coaches, our math coaches, the office staff, the media specialists, the tech person, where will they go if we close a school?
Great question. So we're depending on attrition for those individuals to fill voids. We're trying to be very strategic with our hiring practices also. I, some of our school-based administrators, principals, and assistant principals, we're not filling those by going out, doing the traditional interviews and all that. The only school we've actually filled was Cypress Bay High School, you know, super large, so we need to do something a little bit different there. But for the rest of the schools, we're filling those voids with people who are in the leadership pipeline program so that when these final recommendations are actually executed, we have places to staff individuals such as guidance counselors, school techs, and things like that. So we have a lot of attrition over the year. And so we're hopeful that most of those individuals will be able to find a home.
So I would like a staff follow-up on the attrition rates and how many people we have hired to fill, and if there's, how many staff are potentially displaced? Because what I don't want to do is say, you're gonna find a home, and then they call me because we closed their school and they can't find a home.
We can provide that. That's why I say I'm hopeful, but we can provide a follow-up.
And so when we, if we're expanding our K through eights, does that, what happens to the schools that have pre-K, E S E classes, and V P K?
Go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
So K eight is, you know, obviously is what we normally call the school, but many of our, at least I would say several of our K eights have pre-K. They all have space and availability for our E S E programs, E S E classrooms. We, it is a full school. And then it just, we look at enrollment, we look at demand. But I can tell you, you know, you look at many of our K eights, they have pre-K components.
And then my final question, and I appreciate my colleagues for giving me more time. A lot of our speakers have asked for additional funding. And a lot of times when I've gone out to my community, I've said, well, if we close schools, that means we will be able to pool our resources. Is that actually true? Because I feel like we're also trying to fill funding gaps. So I just want to be abundantly clear that if we go out and say, if we close your school, you're gonna have smaller class sizes, you're gonna have new playground, you're gonna have more programs, that that is actually a promise that we can fulfill.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were making a statement, not a question.
Nope, nope. I have one of my questions.
Yes, it will be pulled, yes, it will be pulled into the bucket of either a budget that's applicable for capital or general, and the board give us direction of how we use that money.
So is the schools, so if District Two is primarily affected by all of these closures, like we did for Broward Estates, will that money stay within that district, or will it be expanded throughout?
That's a board decision. That was a board decision for Broward Estates also.
Okay. Yeah. That's, I can summarize if you'd like, Chair, just unless you...
Go ahead.
Okay. So for Panther Run, I would like to continue the conversation with a true outlook on if we have a school within a school, if we'll be able to maintain that school community- we have a school within a school, if we'll be able to maintain that school community. For Walter C. Young, I would like to continue the conversation both as a three through eight and potential closure and bringing in our city partners. I think I said my K through eight stance, I do not believe we need more than one or two at maximum. I'm interested in pursuing the Glades Middle for the technical college. And then I would like to continue the proposals to look at consolidating Sunshine slash Fairway and Pines Lake slash Palm Cove, making sure that we're look, talking to those communities and, and looking at who's choosing to leave that school already. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holness.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to everyone who came today to, to speak. Please understand that your input is very valuable to us. Thank you, Dr. Hepburn, Dr. Wanza and your team. We appreciate all of the efforts. And Dr. Wanza, I know you've been to all of the community meetings. Thank you so much, as well as your team, for what you've done. So, you know, I believe that as a school district, we're at a junction where we must make the tough decisions. I believe some of our decisions will not be popular, but the consequences are real if we don't make these decisions. And, and these consequences are at our borders. It is responsible of us to redefine Broad County schools to save our schools. I am not in favor of selling any school property when we redefine our schools, including in the context of what we term to be closed in specific schools, but using those properties for other purposes such as staffing and so on and so forth. Because I for one believe that while we're in this current situation, none of us can predict what the next 20 years will be from now when we will possibly need these properties again, should we start to see an increase in enrollment with families moving into Florida or the birth rate going up or whatever it may be. So I am not in favor of selling any of our schools, but repurposing them. I believe if we don't act immediately, others will act for us. And so we must, we must make these decisions. So I have a few questions before I talk about the specific schools. Dr. Hepburn, is it true that in the last 20 years or so, Broad County schools have lost approximately 40,000 to 50,000 students?
That's correct.
Okay. And currently, how many approximately empty seats do we have in Broad County schools as opposed to where we were 20 years ago?
Fifty thousand.
Okay. So what current or pending Florida bills or laws or statutes that may impact us if we don't act swiftly and comprehensively in Broad County schools?
Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Their more recent one is the School of Hope, and it's a change of eligibility into the number of schools that could potentially be co-located by those operators. So they would give us a notice of intent for facilities that can accommodate them. And that notice could be, it has to be at least a year and up to two years.
Okay. And Dr. Hepburn, if you don't mind, Mr. Sullivan, so that the general public can understand, if that should come to fruition, what would that mean, for example, with schools that are under enroll or significantly under enroll?
Again, those Hope operators could give us a notice of intent to co-locate into those buildings. So I think it's important for the board to consider that as they consider how schools look like and what programs and people are placed in those buildings.
Okay. And, and Mr. Sullivan, from your understanding, should schools co-locate into our traditional schools, who would foot the cost of these students?
My best understanding of that is we cannot charge them to utilize the space in terms of some sort of rental or rental fee. And we have to maintain those facilities, including the portions that they use.
Okay. So if a school is, say, 60% enrolled, technically, an alternative option for schools could come in there and occupy the other 40%, and Broad County traditional schools would be responsible for the cost to accommodate this?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Dr. Hepburn, would it be then in the district's best interest as we move forward to utilize as close as possible 100% of our facilities?
Yes, if that's the will of the board to utilize 100% of our facilities versus surplusing some for sell-off or whatever the case may be.
Okay. So based on Mr. Sullivan's comments, would it be fair to say that if we don't act as a district, there's a possibility and a strong possibility that others may, may act on our behalf?
Yes, that's affirmative.
Okay. All right. So I am going to, and I, and I just want to say to the public, based upon what we're getting and, and the feedback that we're getting, it would be, it would not be responsible of us if we don't take action and if we don't make tough decisions. Because one way or another, we're going to be impacted as a district. And if we don't act, then we're looking into the possibilities of, of other, other actions being taken by the state and so on and so forth. So I think it's really imperative that we make these decisions, and some of them, as I said, will be unpopular. So I just want to, and Dr. Zeman, you must have been reading my mind or my notes, but I have it here in my notes and I've met with a, a few others, and I've also spoken to some city leaders as well, including Councilmember Reinstine of Plantation regarding the Casey Wright Building. So we're looking at, when we look at the Casey Wright Building, and, and may I say that wherever we should locate our school board headquarters, that my hope is that Kathleen C. Wright remains as the name of such headquarters. Because the, the name travels with the headquarters and not associated to a specific building. So, Dr. Hepburn, what I'd like to ask, in alignment with Dr. Zeman, is that we get an appraisal for the Casey Wright Building? Was there one that has ever been done?
No, I researched this actually this week. There's, there's never been an appraisal of this current building since it was purchased. So I've already had Ms. Akabuso start the process to get an appraisal for, for the building.
Okay. So I hope, Dr. Hepburn, that once we have this appraisal, I actually would love for you to present options to us that would be financially beneficial and support the redefining efforts, should the board approve the selling of the Casey Wright Building. Would that be?
Noted.
Okay. And hopefully, you know, I would suggest, as a part of the redefining process, that the headquarters for Broad County schools be, be located in, in a central location to echo Dr. Zeman, such as Plantation Middle School, or any other central location that we may consider in the redefining process. I believe we're, I'm going to talk about Beer Middle as well. And to utilize existing space at any school that we will be potentially closing for staff in, that may not be essential to be within the headquarters of Broad County schools. So, Dr. Hepburn, would, would, I'm just providing my input, would that be something that could possibly be considered?
Yeah. So we'll start with appraisal first and get that information to the board, and then look at options that are available at that time if the board wants to direct us to go out and exercise an, an option to find a different space for our headquarters.
Okay. So I want to talk about North Fork. And while I, and I appreciate the comments made on North Fork, and while I appreciate urgency being expressed in terms of receiving $10 million donation and having a time constraint to it, I also caution that this does not, in some way, create such a sense of urgency that it would preclude others from providing proposals for that location. So for North Fork, I would suggest, Dr. Hepburn, that we get additional proposals from community stakeholders and consider those, as well as we consider the JA World proposal. Or JA World, should that proposal be considered, that it's reflective of other community programs that would, that would be, that would be based on community input in addition to what they're proposing. So I do hope that we're not considering North Fork simply because of the $10 million and simply because of the urgency that is, that is expressed to, to move ahead in order to utilize this money. It is important that as a board, we consider the community's input. And I'm not sure if we've gathered enough input on North Fork to move ahead with JA World. So while I'm not in opposition to JA World, I would like to see that we exhaust, Dr. Hepburn, all options of seeking proposals from community stakeholders of that location before we move ahead with JA World. And if we do move ahead eventually with JA World, that JA World consider programs within North Fork that will benefit that community, or even consider additional partners locally from the community that could utilize space in, in North Fork as well. And I just want to mention that North Fork, and I had asked Ms. Janice to provide me with some demographics of North Fork, and North Fork is 84% blacks, 12% whites. It is a Title I school, 11 to 12, I'm sorry, 12% Hispanic. So it, it's really important. And by the way, as well, Dr. Hepburn, North Fork has a significant number of homeless students, which is sort of an anomaly compared to some of the other schools. So I think it's important when we're repurposing North Fork that we understand the community, that we value the community and, and value the, the kind of challenges they have before we may take any action to, to move forward with any proposal. So that is for North Fork. I'm going to continue with, let me see. I'm going to continue with Thurgood Marshall. So the suggestion here is to transition Thurgood Marshall to K through eight gifted education. So, Dr. Hepburn, what impact will this have on enrollment, by enrollment in the surrounding elementary schools?
As far as a K through eight gifted dual lang, dual language focus, it wouldn't have much of an impact. As you remember, Parkway was the actual gifted school that drew kids from all over the county. It, yeah, I don't know the history, but it kind of fizzled out. So you're just trying to rekindle that because many, and many of the, the meetings I've gone to for the gifted advisory committee, they're axing for such a school. And so we're looking at options across the district, so it's not one location, this would be one of several.
Right. So you don't anticipate this impacting the enrollment at Dillard Elementary and any of the other schools?
We have, the gifted students are spread out throughout the county. They're not just, you know, there's not 200 gifted kids at Dillard Elementary or, or 200 gifted kids at Walker Elementary. They're spread out throughout the county.
Got it. So regarding Beer and West Pine Middle, I did notice one of the potential strategies is to combine Beer Middle School and West Pine Middle School. Looking at the numbers, Dr. Hepburn, on the Beer and West Pine, I do see that when we look at inbound and outbound students, if students were to transition from Beer to West Pine in the ideal sense of the word, then there would be 1,271 students. West Pine has a capacity of 1,193. So can you expound on what challenges that would create should we move ahead with that option?
I don't think proposes a lot of challenges. I think it proposes a lot of benefits. When you have a school that starts getting 80% and above capacity, that provides opportunity to offer more programming, more of those specialty type programs within the school because it's, it's funded correctly. It's, you're not, you, you're not utilizing just half the space of the school and spend a lot of money on maintenance and operations for something that you're not using. So I don't see a lot of, a lot of detriments.
Understand. But I, I guess you misunderstood my question. So what happened is if we, if we take all of the students at Beer currently, the inbound and, and outbound, it would exceed the capacity of West Pine, it appears, by a small margin. So how would we deal with that challenge?
Yep. Go ahead, Dr. Wanza. I know we're, most of that is reassignment and we just won't allow reassignments.
So, thank you, Dr. Hepburn. You hit the nail on the head. We would certainly limit. Thank you, Joe. It would be under by 20 students. So we would definitely look at limiting to a greater degree the, the ability for parents to choose the school as a reassignment option. That, that's the, that's the biggest thing, is that the school would not be one of those schools now that could accept a large number of reassignments because we've essentially changed its boundary so that it has more students in the boundary to take up the seats that are there at the school.
Okay. So, Dr. Wanza, if at any point West Pine should experience an increase in enrollment where it's above capacity, would, would it then be considered to sort of rebounder some of those students into, say, Plantation's Six through Twelve, should, should Plantation become a Six through Twelve?
So there would be a school that would come up now because of significant over enrollment, right? And then we would exercise, the board would have the option of exercising one of the strategies in the policy, which is obviously a boundary change. We cap enrollment, there are several strategies, but yeah, we would have to then look at realigning boundaries to accommodate an over-enrolled school.
Correct. And, Dr. Wanza, currently, if we combine Plantation Middle with Plantation High School, there would still be adequate room to accommodate additional students, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, I have a few suggestions. And then I wanted to make some general comments, if you don't mind, on the other areas of the district. So number one, I am supportive of combining Plantation Middle with Plantation High and Plantation Middle being utilized by this city of Plantation. That would enable opportunities for, for them to utilize the space as well as for them to offer, I believe, Dr. Wanza, was, was the city going to offer some additional programs at Plantation Six through Twelve? Should it become a Six through Twelve?
Yes. The, the city is very much interested in working to develop a public safety career pathway.
And that would provide opportunities for the students, should it merge for Plantation's Six through Twelve?
It would be Plant, it would be at Plantation High School, whatever grades Plantation High School would serve. So if it's Nine through Twelve or Six through Twelve, yes.
And they would occupy, if we so choose to proceed down that road, Plantation Middle School, the city?
No.
Okay. So the Plantation Middle School would become what?
It would be, it would be, it would be another district use. We know that we have security operations there, so that could probably expand, but it would be for another district use. You will, the board, obviously in the public sees in the appendix section, we have a slide that talks about all of the staff that has, have to be relocated from different administrative buildings. The two that are up for sale, one that has already been sold. So it would be whatever's determined operationally, but it would not be occupied by the city.
Okay. So we would be able to utilize 100% of that, of Plantation Middle School for district use, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if we combine, Dr. Hepburn, Beer and West Pine Middle, we would be able to utilize all of Beer Middle School?
Yes. We could utilize Beer Middle School or even work with the city of Sunrise for, for use too.
Understand. So, Madam Chair, I am also supportive of combining Beer and West Pine with the understanding that Beer is utilized by the district for district purposes and that there's no intent to sell any of these properties. Number three, like I mentioned, I want to explore the selling of the Casey Wright Building, relocating the district headquarters, possibly. relocating the district headquarters possibly to the central area and keep Casey Wright as the name of wherever we relocate headquarters. And let me see what else I have. And I just wanted to make some comments on the other areas of the district. I am supportive of Hallandale Magnet to Miro, Pompano Beach. I wanted to ask a question about McNichol. Dr. Hepburn, for McNichol Middle, does any of the potential strategies include the closing of McNichol? Or it's just partnering with Dania Beach and Hollywood to include community programs and career programs while the school remains open?
Yep, so there's no emphasis on closing that school. Those are partnerships and also district use.
Okay, so as long as there's no emphasis on closing that school, I am supportive of the partnership. Forest Glen in Coral Springs, I noticed the FCI is 29%. What does that mean, Dr. Hepburn? I know we've looked at it before. So that means the school potentially has used its useful life, correct?
Repeat that question, Dr. Wanza.
For Forest Glen, it has, the FCI is 29%. I believe 30% and above is when it has exhausted its useful life. So 29% would mean that it's near.
It's close to being that within the next 10 years or so of going beyond its useful life. But some caveats there. It may be specific buildings on that campus because I know we've built buildings on certain campus over the years. So the caveat would be there may be buildings on the campus that is not beyond its useful life, but overall, the school may be beyond its useful life, but it may be buildings that are not.
Understand. So for Forest Glen, I am not supportive of the students going to Lyons Creek. But if a strategy is going to be exercised, I would be more supportive of the students going to Coral Springs, Ramblewood, and Sawgrass Springs. For Coral Springs Elementary, is there a reason that we're not considering merging Coral Springs Elementary, which seems significantly under-enrolled into Parkside Elementary?
I think that was adjacent capacity issue. Go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
Thank you, Dr. Hepburn. It is an adjacent capacity issue. We did bring this up as part of the conversation last year. And remember, it came off because of the adjacent capacity issue.
Okay. And for Sunshine and Fairway, Fairway seems to have a greater capacity with a lower FCI. So is there a reason that it appears that either one of those schools could merge as opposed to the one with, as opposed to keeping the one with greater capacity and lower FCI?
Go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
Thank you. So that was a part of the conversation and my response to Ms. Thompson's question. And then she asked us to look at another element. But we did say that the two driving or leading criteria would obviously be capacity and looking at the facility condition.
Okay, so Fairway would have a greater capacity with lower FCI. So I'm assuming that would be in a better condition?
According to the data, yes.
Right, so I'm just wondering why that decision wasn't made and it's still up in the air which of the two schools?
Well, the proposal, obviously, is to look at combining the schools into one and then using the other as a district use. So as we have the conversations with the community, we will speak to the facility condition and all of that. And that may get us to right there to that end.
Understand. I was just wondering if I missed, if there was an additional factor because I did see that Fairway had a greater capacity and it also had a lower FCI. So I was wondering if maybe there was some other reason why we didn't, you know, why we didn't support Fairway being the choice of school to remain open. But, okay, so for Wooden Rogers and Segal Alternative High School, Dr. Hepburn, can you describe the student population of Segal and also Wooden Rogers? Because we're looking at combining these two schools and I'm wondering what kind of challenge would come about if we do that?
Go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
Thank you, Dr. Hepburn. So Segal and Wooden Rogers are both two of the district's four alternative high schools. As we know, Segal, the major difference is Segal actually has the Teen Parent Program, but they both have the same academic programs, if you will, for the students in grades seven through 12. Unlike Cypress Run, Lanier James, these aren't children that are assigned there because of some behavioral infraction. These are kids who are over age for grade, behind in credit, looking to accelerate themselves, work at their own pace, graduate, and then move to whatever is their next post-secondary option. Currently, the Child Development Program at Segal is actually housed on the Wooden campus. So Segal has one program that we talked about, the Adults with Disabilities Program, that we would relocate to another campus. It's centrally located in the district. But as far as the grade seven through 12 student population, it's pretty much the same student population and programming opportunities. And if I misrepresented anything, Dr. Tumer, who's the Region Superintendent, can certainly fill in any gaps.
Okay, so I'm supportive of that merger. And I'm also supportive of Blade's Middle into a technical college in terms of its, I believe it was Sheridan, Dr. Hepburn, that you mentioned? Yep, so I'm supportive of that as well. And that's it, Madam Chair. I hope you captured all my points.
I believe I did.
Thank you.
Now we have Ms. Rupert.
Thank you. And I wanted to thank any parents and community members that are still back here with us. It's been a long day and we really appreciate the conversation and especially your time here. On page 23, I'm a yes for the Sports Academy. Also, Junior Achievement, Enhanced Resources and Support for some programs offered at Northside Elementary School. Yes to Plantation Middle with Plantation High. Yes to Wooden Rogers and Segal. And I did have a, and yes to the Maritime Magnet Program there too. Also, number four would be Hallandale. I had a question about how a full Magnet Program like Pompano Beach would work at Hallandale, being that it's currently a Magnet School and programs that, their Magnet Programs that they currently have there right now that are especially attracting people there, how will that work with a full school Magnet? Or will that discontinue it and it becomes a full school Magnet? How would that work? And I know this could be a follow-up because obviously we're going to have that conversation.
No, go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
Thank you. I was gonna, I like the latter part of what Ms. Rupert said, a follow-up because what I can tell you, and Mr. Strauss can chime in, is currently the school, it is called Hallandale All Magnet High School and it does have some programs there that there is some student attraction. But I think the school and the community is looking to completely reimagine its entire Magnet portfolio, right? Its entire Magnet portfolio. I know some of their interests, and it wouldn't be an exact mirror of the programs at Pompano. It would be what's more attractive and demanding, if you will, in that part of the county. And I can just give two examples. For example, you know, they back up to Channel 10. They have a full broadcast journalism studio, you know, on campus. And how does that become a pathway? They're right there, two, three blocks, well, country blocks.
I know that.
Country blocks in the city, down from Coca-Cola. Major, you know, distributor here. And so partnerships of that kind coupled with other local businesses. But they want to reimagine the entire Magnet portfolio within the framework of how Pompano operates. And that is what seems to be attractive to the community and the city. And Mr. Strauss can fill in any gaps I may have missed because I know that he actually toured Pompano with them.
Yeah, and I wanted to actually give a little caution on if we're going to mess with what is the special sauce of Pompano Beach High School. You can't do Pompano Beach High School-like place with a Friday. It's the Monday through Thursday, which attracts the very tenured teachers that are all vying to go there. And on Fridays, it gives the students availability to mentor, to tutor, to take accelerated classes. And that is, in essence, something that really can't be broken up that way. I would be very supportive if we had another Pompano-like that would be right for the community and would be very supportive with that. When it comes to Margate Middle, when I was going through this, I didn't quite see part of the conversation that did happen at Coral Springs High School, which was, and I think you put it in, but it just didn't specify Margate, that they were very amenable to having workforce, I almost said housing, workforce careers and a true partnership with ATC. And I don't know what that looks like for a middle school. I mean, do we currently have that right now?
So I'll let the Region Soup speak. I do believe that there may be some semblances of it around the county. And I tried to, and I apologize if it wasn't as descriptive as that, but I do know that you are absolutely correct. At the meeting that evening, there was great interest. And that's why I said an infusion of innovative programs. And so we can certainly look at what does that look like, a partnership with ATC as it relates to Margate Middle School.
Yep, and if I can add, Ms. Rupert, one of the other things, as I said, we're going to bring information about the autism options that works best for the board in that same workshop. Thanks for the addition of Dr. Freed on the team, who's the Director of Magnet and those sorts, that we will be bringing that type of information to the programmatic components because we're still meeting with partners who want to partner with us in scaling out or implementing new innovative programs in our schools that are meeting high-paying industry needs in the area or beyond also. So we'll bring more information about specifics in the next workshop as we move forward to talk about programmatic options.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you for that. So I know that was a big part of the conversation there. And I also want to caution us on making decisions boundary-wise-ish that we have to truly count on Joe and his team to really try to foresee into the future what would happen. And case in point, it was a surprise to me that Lyons Creek is down a little bit-ish. So I was a little surprised with that. I would not be supportive in having more kids go to Lyons Creek that way. I think that's disturbing neighborhoods. And honestly, as someone that went through it, we never in Coconut Creek talked about the city except calling it Coconut Creek. We all had our schools and we were all in Coconut Creek. The boundary issue, and I'm not going to say it again, split us right in half. So it is, I feel the pain, Rebecca, because we lived through it and we still do. But it is good to know that we have to truly, as board members, make sure that we know the enrollment for all our schools, even if it appears that your school is overcrowded and it's not. So there's an issue with there. So I would assume that it would be open for choice. So that would be available for students that want to go there at this point. But that's really all I have for now. I did want to say yes for the extra programs with Cambridge, but I wanted to ask the Superintendent, when we come back to it, to make sure that people are going to know easily by the summer what programs are going to be at their middle schools. Because that's, you know, we want to get them to make sure that they're either staying or choosing our middle schools.
Great, great point, absolutely. They'll know way before summer.
And I think, did I answer the questions that I need to? I think?
I think I'm going to go over some of the newer proposals at the end to get some feedback from the board because there were a few that many of us have not waited on yet, so.
Right, I think that's good for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Servera?
Thank you, Chair. Some general comments and thoughts about this whole process and what this board has to do here moving forward. First and foremost, Dr. Valerie Wanza, a special kudos and thanks to you for all of your hard work and putting all this together and your entire team. The meetings up and down the county over the last, it feels like it's been like six months, but I know it's only really been most of September. So thank you for all of your efforts and your preparation and your hard work. All the parents who participated in those meetings, your engagement, your thoughts, your comments, your feedback was really, was really just overall tremendous. I had the pleasure of attending the session at Coral Springs High School. I also made it a point to watch the remaining portion of those sessions on the Beacon Broadcast, either live or, excuse me, over the feed. And I cannot say how encouraging it was to see those parents, to see those community folks, and to see our students engage with us in this process, their comments, their feedbacks, their thoughts, and their suggestions. Just overall, very, very encouraging. And I'm glad that they were able to be a part of that process. I'm glad that their voices were able to be heard. To the folks that attended the session today and spoke, I know there were a lot of you, although it looks like most of you have thinned out, beat the traffic, probably a smart move. But to those who came today, took time out of their day to speak, we appreciate you, we hear you. And most importantly, I want to thank you for coming and for sharing your thoughts and your insights with us. Again, very encouraging to see so many folks engage in this process. Ms. Thompson, your article yesterday. I want to thank you personally for writing that. I think it took a lot of courage and a lot of guts to put yourself out there. I know I speak for my folks in District Six and certainly the whole community. We're thankful for your transparency and your openness. So thank you for taking the opportunity to write that. You know, these decisions that this board faces are certainly are difficult ones and they're hard ones. I understand the loyalty that the parents, the neighbors, the relatives, the students feel to these schools, these local schools. A lot of you, you know, it's a generational thing. Your mother went there, your cousins went there. You have family members that went there. You have a lot of friends, you have one there. It's deeply rooted into the community. I can certainly appreciate that. I understand the history and I obviously understand the loyalty and the desire for those institutions to remain open for future generations, for your kids, for your grandkids. I went through the pipeline when I attended Broward County Public School System. Started Maplewood Elementary, went to Ramblewood Middle School, which incidentally is one of the schools that is on our list. And I finished at JP Tervah High School in 2001. I went through that feeder school pipeline. And quite frankly, this is how things are supposed to work in a perfect world. But today, we face the reality that we're not in a perfect world anymore. In fact, we're far from it. We know the numbers. We've heard about it, my colleagues have all talked about it. Thousands and thousands of students have left our district or leave our district every year. I think the Superintendent mentioned 50,000 over the last 20 years. That's a lot. And we did that analysis in comparing how many elementary schools that would equate to. So clearly, we've been on the decline for many, many years at this point. Yet despite all this, we still here are operating like it's the early 2000s. And this has to stop. Drastic change in these situations is in fact needed. We have to give some very serious thought about closing these schools. And if we don't, and we heard, Dr. Holness mentioned it, we heard from Mr. Sullivan, if we don't act, we face the reality that the state might act for us. So certainly, while this, we still have the ability to do what we believe is right as board members, we have to take swift action. And before doing this, though, in all fairness, I think it's only right and proper that we look at the financial impact and the financial benefit of taking such drastic-type actions that are being contemplated in these meetings and these discussions and these conversations. and these discussions and these conversations. In looking at the presentation that was prepared today, there's a slide, it's on page 45. And what that talks about is the savings value, the financial impact that the district would realize if in fact we closed our institutions. For example, if we close an elementary school, that leads to an estimated savings of $1.8 million. If we close a middle school, that would lead to an estimating savings of $2.7 million. And if we close a high school, that would lead to an estimated savings of $4.3 million. So, Mr. Superintendent, we have those breakdowns that are provided to us in the presentation here. But there's some things that I'm missing that I would like to know and I think my constituents and the taxpayers of Broward County should know, as well as my colleagues on the board. I would like to know the fair market value for some of these buildings that we are contemplating closing and how much that could generate for the district, whether we decide to ultimately sell those or lease those. So what I would propose, Dr. Hepburn, and hopefully you'll tell me this is possible, that we engage a real estate professional or use someone that we already have access to with a consultant. And when it comes time that we're putting this list together, this final list, if you will, before we vote on any, anything that's final as far as closures are concerned, I'd like to know the fair market value of some of these schools, if we were to sell either the building and the land or combined or whatever, or if we were to lease. I'd like to have an idea what the financial impact of taking these measures would be to the community. I want people to understand that, you know, we potentially have the ability to recover, I would suggest hundreds of millions of dollars, depending on how many buildings we close and we sell off. And I think perhaps if we're going to make the hard decision to close some of these schools, perhaps the pill is a little bit easier to swallow when folks understand the amount of money that we are going to be recovering for that process and how we can reinvest those dollars back into the community. I think we've heard and I know we've gone over with Broward Estates about, you know, there's certain funds that we have to take and it has to be used for that. And I think it was Ms. Thompson who also had that as part of her presentation about how we're going to reuse the funds. And at this point, I would agree, we should probably go back into those communities. But I think in all fairness, I would like to know, Mr. Superintendent, if this is something that can be accommodated? So we have a real-world understanding of the dollars that we're talking about before making these ultimate decisions?
So if you go to page 54 of the presentation, it already has the leasing rates annually for an elementary school and a middle school. So roughly about $2 million annually as far as our revenue from leasing an elementary school and roughly about, let's call it 3.5, 3.7 for a middle school. But I just-
But you're talking averages.
Averages, yeah.
I'm talking specifics.
So let me ask you this, I just want to make sure what the, if I'm correct with the ask, for the schools in this presentation that we are recommending to close to K-12 students, you want the annual leasing revenue and also an appraisal for those buildings?
I think the, okay, so let me go back for a second. I appreciate the average numbers in here, because I did see those. But I want, what I would like, when the, before the final decision is made, I'd like specifics. So for instance, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to call out any specific school by name, because I don't want to do that at this point. So if we're going to say, School A, School B, and School C are going, there's going to be a decision that's going to be made by the board as to whether or not we're going to close School A, B, and C. Before that vote comes to this board, I would very much like a real estate professional to report back to us and tell us that the fair market value of Building A is 50 million. The fair market value of Building B is 75 million and the fair market value of Building C is 20 million. And within that fair market value report, I'd also like to see the fair market rental value for Building A, if you were to do it on a standard 12-year lease with a three- to five-year renewal option, it would be X dollars, X dollars a month.
Understood.
I would like to see those specifics as opposed to just, I mean, I appreciate the averages on the page, but I'd like to see the specifics as, on an institution-by-institution basis before we make our final decision in December or January, whenever the final-
Understood. So I know we can most likely get you the leasing information, because we can do that internally. The real estate professional or appraisal, that will bear a cost. So I just want to make sure as a board, do we have consensus for that aspect? And then I'll lean into Ms. Paul to find out a timeline. Could we appraise that many buildings prior to bringing the final recommendation in January?
Let me clarify, because obviously I understand what goes into a real estate appraisal, right? I'm not looking for a detailed real estate appraisal. I'm looking for, in a residential world, we would call it a comp, right? It's just a basic sliding scale type number, like we think this building is between 50 and 60 million dollars. I don't want a full-out appraisal that, you know, we're going to have to go in and do inspections and get people on the, I don't want all that. I want a commercial building comparable number of what we have on the list. And that sliding range, usually between like 10,000 or 15,000 in the residential world. But I have to imagine in commercial world, it's probably close to that as well. That's all I'm asking for. Not a formal, I don't want comparables. Because I realize I will take that.
So understood. It still bears a cost, so I know I'm going to need consensus from the board, but I want to, Ms. Paul, if there's any additional information to weigh in on timeline.
Yes, sir. To revisit, what you see on page 54 is that scale is based on a commercial rate for leasing. So what we would provide is pretty much the same as what you see on page 54 for each building. And so we would go by the commercial comps, square footage, that sort of thing. And I would have to respond back to the superintendent in terms of the time element associated with this.
Is there a cost for, not the leasing part, but the actual value of the determinative value of the school with a commercial real estate professional?
If we do it internally, we can just look at some of the comps. But typically for something like this, we do get a company, we have a couple of companies on contract to do this.
Okay, alright. So it would not be a current, it wouldn't be an additional cost? I just want to clarify for the board.
It would be whatever spending authority we have on the contract.
Okay, alright.
So it sounds, and sounds unlikely, that this is a real possibility and that's fantastic. I know the ask, I thought I heard the ask was made with the Casey Wright Building as well for as far as the comp, and that's great. Dr. Hepburn, following up still on the Casey Wright aspect, I heard from obviously Dr. Zeeman and Dr. Holness about potential desire to have that building sold. Or this building, I should say, sold. If that is the case, I guess the next obvious question is, where would we go, right? And wherever we go, is this a situation where we'd be moving into a space that is not being fully utilized, that we can just kind of slide into? Or is this something where we now have to go and rent another building? That's going to be more cost to the district than the taxpayers?
So we will find a space that's not fully utilized. If the Plantation Middle School option is supported by the board with transitioning the middle school into a 6-12 with a high school, we may be able, just we need to evaluate how much space the security, safety and security team will occupy to see how much space we will have available for board meetings, housing some of the cabinet and other staff. So we will have to look around to make sure we can actually accommodate ourselves in that particular space. It's centrally located. That conversation's been brought up before. It's probably about the 30th, I've heard this conversation. So we would look at, see if we can accommodate ourselves in that space. If we have to find a space outside of a school, of course, we'll have that conversation with the board, but we would look at our own internal space first, that's centrally located.
Fantastic. And lastly, Dr. Hepburn, we heard from a lot of parents this afternoon and incidentally, I've heard this from some of my constituents as well, about the autism charter. Realistically, and understanding the different needs that would be required to go into a fully functional autism charter school, what would be the time range in which we can get something like that operational, assuming that that is ultimately the will of the board and we go in that direction?
So I can tell you, for district-operated, we can get that up and running for the following school year, this upcoming 20, was it 26, 27 school year. For charter option, we will have to talk with charter schools that may be interested in, you know, working with us and having us actually manage the charter school to see what their timeline would look like to get it up and running. But I know for us, district-operated, we can get that up and running by the beginning of next school year.
Okay, so this isn't something that's like a five-year plan? I mean, this is something that we can turn on very quickly.
Correct.
Alright, thank you. Nothing further from me.
Thank you. And before we go to a second round, I would like to go. So I will reiterate my appreciation for everyone who has participated in this process, from our staff to the community, to the parents, especially to the students who at every meeting I was at spoke really passionately and eloquently about their community. So thank you. I kind of want to start with some big picture pieces. So number one, as we go through this process, moving forward and for, you know, future years, I want us to think about communication. It was really encouraging to hear Mr. Sparks say today that this is the first time he's felt good about this process and that we don't often hear feedback like that during painful discussions like what we're having. So kudos to staff for making that possible and making some members of the community finally trust us a little bit. With that said, we did hear from like the city of Dania Beach. I've heard from different school communities, a little bit about being blindsided. So they showed up to a meeting and the first they heard about a certain proposal was a flyer being handed out. So I just want us to think about, I know that staff and the superintendent went and met with the cities, but I would like us to just think about over-communicating in the future. One thing that really resonated with me, especially during the Stranahan meeting, was around marketing. And I think we have an incredible opportunity with our students to do some student-generated marketing. So hearing the students at Stranahan High School talk about the amazing things happening at Stranahan High School and seeing the band, it really, you know, got people excited, especially the alumni, about sending their own children to Stranahan. So I hope that part of when we're talking about redefining, we're redefining our district centering on student voice. And I think like, you know, a lot of student-centered content and student-generated content would be really, really interesting and fun. Because kids, we heard in the workshop two weeks ago, that they, you know, trust each other and take their word for it better than when it comes from us. So I just had to make that point. I think to repeat something one of my colleagues said earlier, Mr. Severa, I think you read my notes, because I was going to ask about the financial impact of each of these proposals. I think like moving forward, I would really like to see for each of the proposed strategies, what would be the financial impact of that? And I want to come back to, well, no, I'll just say this right now. Does the slide on page 45 about we would save X amount of dollars if we close an elementary school tell the full? I feel like we're missing some context there. So for instance, if, and I want to, before I say anything, I do not support closing Forest Glen. So I want to, but I'm just using this as an example. If we were to close Forest Glen and utilize it for another district use, are we saving, what is it, $4 million or $3 million?
So if we, so there's, the context is different per school, because you have different number of support staff, principals, APs, clerical, custodian, and all of those other tangible things. So if we go by the average that's listed here for Forest Glen, if it was to close outright to K-12 students and not utilize for district use at all, you would save roughly around 2.7, give or take some dollars, depending on the context for that school. If it was to be used for district use, because we are still utilizing utilities, we may be still utilizing custodians, it will be less because it's not kids in the building. So you can take off, on my average conversant with the team and getting some numbers, for a middle school, you probably can take off about four, minus about $400,000. Let's call it 500,000 to, because of, you got to pay for utilities. You have to pay for maintenance, operations and things like that. You're not paying for principal, assistant principals and other support staff and the additional needs of custodians based on the number of kids in the building. So you would have some savings, but it wouldn't be the same amount of savings if it was used for district use.
Got it. So I just want us to be real about the financial impact. And well, let me go back. Would on page 45 or on slide 45 where it says to close an elementary school, we would save, and this would be full-out close, not for other district use, we would save 1. million? Is that annually or is that a one-time savings?
Technically, it's annual, because you're not paying for that principal, that assistant principal every year for that site.
Got it.
The site-based savings is annual.
Got it. So then if we were to do the proposal for Forest Glen, which would be to use it for another district use, we would save annually, if we're, yeah, about $500,000?
No, you would save about $2 million, because-
We were going to use it for other district use?
Correct. So right now, the average is about 2.7, based on our rough calculations. If you take, if we use it for additional district use, now you're adding back in the cost of utilities and some maintenance, so take off 500,000.
Okay, okay. I misunderstood that. Okay. So I think next time, it might be helpful to, well, I think I would ask that next time, when we have these proposals, we have an exact, not an estimated dollar amount next to each proposal, we expect the financial impact of this to be this.
Yep.
And I would say the same thing for enrollment projections. So, which brings me to my next question, and I kind of go back and forth between these two issues. Have we done like an after-action report based on the changes that we made in redefining last year?
Yes, we've looked at the increased enrollment at those particular schools. So there is an increase in enrollment. I think the goal for many of those schools is 75 to 100 for the grade level band. So how many, it's a goal for the students for sixth grade or whatnot to pay for some of the transition of those costs. And so those schools have met their goals of 75 students or more.
Okay. I would really be interested in next time also being presented with that information. But moving forward for these, for the, these proposals, I think it would be very helpful for us to have some enrollment projections for each proposal. So again, just to go back to the Forest Glen, like just because that's easy. Again, I do not support closing Forest Glen, so I want to be clear with that. If we were to do that, what would be the impacted, you know, the impacts of that? As well as the impacts of expanding the K8s? So I think for me, a financial impact for each proposal and enrollment projections for each proposal, as well as looking at some sort of after-action report from the changes that we made last year by expanding some K8s and the changes made at Broward Estates.
And if I can add, Madam Chair. So some of this will be slightly about enrollment projections, more so, and some of it is about consolidating, because there's just been a perennial loss of students in certain areas of the district. So when we're consolidating schools, it's not so much more about increasing enrollment, more so than doing something that's more fiscally responsible and consolidating the schools for maximum impact of the funding. But we do, for programmatic changes of schools that we're not consolidating, those will be more so about, just to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you.
We'll add all that information in there.
Thank you, thank you. And I guess what I, maybe I should use a different word, so like, enrollment change estimates or something like that? So- So like for instance, if we were to do an autism school, a special autism school, whether it's a district managed charter or something else, what would be the impact we would expect on our clusters? Cause there are several schools in my district that have very substantial thriving clusters. Would, would we expect that, that autism school to pull from the clusters? Just so we, we like can make a fully.
Absolutely. Cause I think once we give the survey to the parents that have eligible students that can go to a program like that, it'll be better data for the board to make a decision. If we have, send that survey out and ninety-eight percent of the parents say, no, I'm not taking advantage of that. Right? That's a different decision versus if twenty percent and thirty percent say yes. So we'll have that data.
And in addition, like, you know, changing the boundaries and, and things like that, I would really like to see some projections around like how that would play out. I agree with Ms. Bullman in the idea that, you know, we are asking the community to upend a significant part of their lives. And if we are going to ask that of our communities in closing a school or consolidating a school, we need to do the analogous thing at the district. So I mean, for, for back of a better term, closing departments. And I know that sounds scary, but I think both symbolically and financially and pragmatically, that's what makes sense. So I, I think that we really need to look at that as we do the org chart and the budget. To speak to the Witten Rogers Segal proposal, to be very transparent, Segal has a very special place in my heart. And I would encourage all of my colleagues to go visit Witten Rogers and Segal. Because I would anticipate that you all have students from your district attending those schools. And the things that they do at those schools are, are very, they're beautiful. And I invite you, I hope you all come to their graduations next year as well. So I just need some reassurance about a few issues if we are to move Segal to Witten Rogers. So number one, would the, the services and programs for our parenting students be maintained at Witten Rogers? If we were to?
Yes, we've evaluated the possible consolidation and it more than has the facilities to meet the needs of the, of the current program, programs at Segal.
Okay. And so I know that both schools have extra support for students. Would those supports follow the Segal students?
Yes.
Okay. And we would still maintain the childcare aspect for the students and our employees at Witten Rogers?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we plan, we don't plan on diminishing any program from Segal during that transition.
Got it. Okay. I do not, I, I believe one of my colleagues, I didn't hear consensus, but I do not support giving up both of those properties. I think these, these schools really, I encourage you to visit, they really provide important programs for our students who might otherwise be overlooked. And, and they do really incredible things. So I, and I support if we are to move the Segal students to Witten Rogers, I would support allowing the city of Fort Lauderdale to use the Segal property. What would that look like? Would we be looking to sell or to lease or what, what is the, the goal there?
The initial thought was to lease. So we can actually maintain that property. In case, you know, down the line, if the pendulum swings and people start having more babies again. Gen Alpha, come on. And we may, and if we need a property, we can always, you know, negotiate and, and do what we need to do if we need to build additional schools in, in, in the future.
Got it. Thank you. I, I am with Dr. Holness on the idea of not selling our school sites. I am very interested in as we consolidate properties or consolidate schools, I'm very interested in leasing. I do very much support the idea that the people who currently work in this building should work at school sites. So I, I am interested in exploring what can be done with this building. Whether that's selling or leasing and doing affordable housing and doing a profit share. I'd, I'd be interested in multiple different options. In that, given that the case, the Kathleen C. Wright legacy is carried on wherever the, the headquarters for the school board is, is moved. I do not support the expansion of additional K eights. I support the partnership with Pembroke Park. I think that, that was incredible. That was something I learned today about the, the school lunches. Very cool. I support seeking additional proposals for North Fork as Dr. Holness suggested. You know, that's a very important piece of land. And I think that exploring everything available before making a decision would be wise. I think that's where I am now. I have Mrs. Alhadef on the list to speak another time.
If I could, before we transition, so and you can help me out here, Dr. Wanza. So Walter C. Young, I haven't heard of about that. But if the board is entertaining something different than what Walter C. Young is right now, additional K through eights will be needed because of, yeah, oh, if we close, yeah, for closing Glades, that's where I meant, yes. If you close Glades and transition to, you would need the additional K eights. I just want to make sure that the board is aware of the purpose of the K eights is to accommodate the need for more middle school grade levels in the South due to Glades Middle transitioning to something else.
Thank you for clarifying that. I am more flexible on that, depending on the decisions that are made. Thank you. And I, I support, sorry, I support Mr. Severa's wanting kind of an idea of what everything will cost. So I, I have Ms. Alhadef on the list to speak another time and then Ms. Bullman. Then if anyone else wants to speak again, please flag me.
Thank you. So to speak to the K through eights, I know in my experience in my district with the K through eights, the middle school part of it wasn't funded appropriately. So they weren't getting specials and then it ultimately failed. So if we're going to do the K eight to model, we have to make sure that we're funding the middle school part of it appropriately. In regards to the Casey Wright Building and selling the Casey Wright Building, I am open to that opportunity. I, I think that having our staff actually in our schools is going to make our schools stronger. And so I'd like to see what that would look like. And then the, between the Segal and the Wilton Rogers, I would say look at the facilities assessment. See which one has a better building to, to combine the two. And I think that wasn't really talked a lot about today is the facilities assessments that we've done. I think that is a strategic part of this whole conversation with all of these different schools. And, and so when this comes back to us again, that we really need to look at that part of it and also to look at Peter Patterns and the financials savings, specifically on each of these decisions that we're, that we're making. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bullman.
Thank you. First of all, I, I wanted to add, because I was going to ask this question anyway in a follow-up request. So Ms. Thompson had made a, an inquiry regarding attrition. And so I just wanted to add to that because I think that hers was, I don't remember what you asked exactly, but I wanted to add to that to ask how many positions have we filled externally since July first, twenty twenty-five? When a, a current employee had resigned, was terminated, retired or otherwise left their position? And then if we've filled any of those externally, if you could provide a list of those positions and the salaries? Did I have some more? So that, that was one.
I'm noting, I'm noting your.
Okay, thank you. Like I have made a provided it right later. I support the looking into selling Casey Wright. The North Fork, if we're really going to get into business here, I just, the North Fork situation, I'd like to get a little bit more information because we're throwing around this ten million dollar figure. But I was never under the impression that we were getting the ten million dollars. Okay. So just so everyone knows, we're not getting ten million dollars. JA is getting ten million dollars. Additionally, my understanding that I just learned is that we actually pay JA to provide our, our students with the services. So I'm having a hard time understanding why we would be giving land to JA potentially for free. Just wondering. My other understanding is that that's a prime piece of real estate there. So I support Dr. Holness. I think we need to look into other opportunities. We've got plenty of places that we could put JA if they're looking for something. But you know, if we're really going to get down to business and people want our spaces, then leasing opportunities are definitely something that we need to be exploring. I think that was all that I had. And then with the Segal-Witten Rogers, is that, is it an either or for the fire department? Or is that just for Segal?
It's not an either or, it's actually Segal.
They want Segal.
And, and Witten Rogers is the better of the two. If you go out to Segal, it's more modulars or, or portables. And Witten Rogers has more permanent buildings that just recently received a lot of construction upgrades also.
Okay. So, so I support that. And then, you know, I, I think what my colleagues have said, the, we can't really make a decision on anything until we understand the financial impact. And if we're moving all of these pieces around, you know, we heard from the community, and I think we did, I think did a really good job last year. I think that the, you know, the new K through eights were funded very well. They were, the schools got a lot of attention that they needed. I know I can speak to that personally. So if we can, we need to make sure that we're able to do that so that we're accomplishing what we're doing otherwise. It's kind of an exercise in futility. So we need to look at those. I, I think that that's correct, that we need to look at the financial impact. And then, you know, ultimately, we're going to need an overarching business plan for our property. And, you know, I'd, I'd really like to have an idea of what it looks like, what the, you know, what the projection is of Schools of Hope and if that is a threat in Broward County, if that's something that we really need to be preparing for. Or if we can take a different, if the market is saturated in Broward and we need to be looking in a different direction and figuring out how we can lease some of our properties and actually make some money off of them. So I, I think that, I mean, I don't know if we do that internally or if we hire a consultant to do that. But I think we could make a lot more money if we were doing this quickly and acting and we had a professional that's very well-versed in this kind of thing, doing that. Because we need to figure out how we're making our assets work for us.
So I, I would say the first step is we have to get some buildings offline if we're going to lease them first. But the second thing I want to point out to the board is on the October twenty-fourth, first workshop, the first iteration of the FCA reports, Ms. Paul and Bureau of Variety will be going through that with details to give clarity around how that process works, what, what does it entail? And then the more reports will be coming out over the next few months. They are going to, they're in a process of RFP for master planner that will help a lot with what you're discussing. As far as, you know, how do we utilize or what decision does the board need to make about our properties? Especially the ones that have a high FCI index that are pretty close to their, the end of life. And what do we do at those properties? Cause it doesn't make a lot of sense to continue to pour money into them. So there's a lot of decisions to make moving forward.
I, I guess I'd like to know what our timeline is because it seems like it needs to be faster rather than slower. And when we're talking, I mean, obviously like there's so many things happening that we need to be.
Absolutely.
You know, the government glacier.
Absolutely. The time is not our best friend due to what's going on in Tallahassee. We, we understand that. But at, at the same time, the process has to be very methodical so we don't make any mis, missteps for ourselves. So I think more to come, starting with the October twenty, twenty-first workshop on the FCA. And then the cadence after that to really understand our current assets. And I could tell you, I'm, this is just my opinion, the charter schools or other entities are not going to want to lease or rent a space that is not usable, right? If you got a high index and it's falling apart and it requires a lot of money to, to maintain, they're not going to want to use that space. So the board have some decision-making to do for ourselves in our district that I don't think outside entities will be, will be impacting us for those type of spaces.
Okay. But I'd like to get an idea so I don't have to worry about it.
Absolutely.
And then just another thing to the point about the master planner. What exactly? Like what, what kind of a position is that? And excuse my ignorance, but I mean, it seems to me like we have an urban planning situation here. So is it the same thing, this, you know, because we have a lot of green space, there's a lot of potential partnerships with all, you know, with all of our municipalities?
Yep.
Would our master planner be an urban planner?
I can have Ms. Paul kind of provide some detail on master planner as we've utilized in the past and how that iteration looks for, for modern times.
Good afternoon again, Board Chair, Superintendent Hepburn and Board Members. So you pretty much hit on all of those things that a master planner will do. They will engage with the community to get additional information, start that conversation about what community needs that are most important to the various cities, communities and so forth. They will look at the FCA data that we've selected and work in concert with staff, Bureau of Variety to also come up with kind of a priority list based on the input we get from the communities, the board and so forth. So it's just that, what it says in the title, a master facility planner. Looking at the whole system of our buildings, from administration buildings to schools to, you know, everything that, every property element that we have. And come up with, help us come up with the plan and present it to the board. And then more importantly too, it, it, a master planner also looks outward in terms of where do we want to be the next five, 10 years as a school district? They'll incorporate whether we intend to go out for a bond in twenty twenty-eight and those kind of things. And look at, you know, what makes sense in terms of our footprint as a school district. And just give us a, a three sixty view of the school district. So I'm pretty excited about that piece.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds, that sounds great. How do we, how are we selecting said master planner?
I am going to say it, an RFP.
Okay. Um, that is it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Dr. Holness.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I do support the, that the superintendent look into district manage autism charter for possibly the South and North. I am not, and I will reiterate, I'm not in favor of selling schools that we are repurposing. Obviously, if we consider selling the Casey Wright Building and staff can move into some of these locations. I think it's important that we understand that history tends to be cyclical where it repeats itself. So we may be under-enrolled today, but if we're not careful and we're, we may become shortsighted. And twenty, thirty years from now, we are over-enrolled and we don't have space for students in Broward County schools. So I think that we have a responsibility not only to think of the moment, but to think of generations to come as we move forward. You know, just like population trends are cyclical, the stock market is cyclical. These are things that we have to consider. And Dr. Hepburn, from what I've heard, I hope that if we're move, if we're going to have another phase, that we don't call it Phase Three, we call it Phase Five. another phase, that we don't call it Phase Three, we call it Phase Final, because I don't think we want to keep doing this over and over. So I hope the next time we do this, it's final phase, and no longer in numerical progression type, because I think the community cannot absorb too much of this. All right, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
I just had a follow-up question on getting a master planner, because if an RFP would take six to nine months, or faster, like, how quickly could that be done?
The intent is to put the RFP out this month, so, and typically, you know, it should not take as long as other things, because we're just looking for a firm to do a specific item. So I don't foresee it taking six months to do this. I'll get you, I'll follow up with a timeline for the board, expedited timeline for that.
But then it won't, it still wouldn't be done by January, correct?
So quite honestly, what I believe is important is we go through this process, the master planner is looking at kind of where we are now, and then where we want to be in five and 10 years. So it goes in concert with this conversation that's happening right now. So you don't necessarily have to have the master planner in place by January to make the decisions you have to make.
I was going to reiterate that, too. This process is about addressing perennial under enrollment in our schools. That master planner is going to be way beyond that. You may have a school that's overpopulated where it's, the facility wise, is, doesn't meet the needs of the students in the community because it's just outdated. And so in those situations, the board is going to have to make a decision about, do you build a replacement school and those type of issues? So the master planner is a wider scope than this.
I just have a problem if we are going to my community and saying we're about to close five to six schools, and now we're going to get a master planner, and then maybe this master planner comes in and says, oh, actually, you didn't need to do that. Like, I, I'm struggling with that.
No, so the master planner is, so we, our struggle right now is that we have perennially enrolled, under enrolled schools, right? And so that's what's in front of us right now. A master planner would most likely give us the same information about under enrolled schools, that we need to do something to lessen our footprint, but in addition to all of that, they're going to give us information about what do we need to do with all of our existing buildings? If you have a comparable enrolled school, or over enrolled school, this building is too old, you need to build a replacement school, or, you know, those type of situations. So what we're facing right now is under enrollment, and we're dealing with those issues right now in this process and using all the data that we have available, which is some FCI data for the 34 schools that need to be addressed. And so that's what's informed this process. The master planner is a wider scope of work than what we're dealing with right now. This is a lane that's narrow, that's about the perennial under enrollment for the past 10 years in certain schools in our district, if that helps.
Okay, so I'll probably need everyone's help, but I'm going to try to land the plane to get some information about some of the new proposals that I heard. And if I don't capture that, I hope you'll let me know. But I heard the majority of the board support the expansion of some, like, career vocational training. Am I, I heard one objection to that, but I'm hearing additional objections to that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to find out, do we need a motion to extend the workshop? I'm not sure if we're within the guidelines of the eight hours.
No. Ms. Sullivan?
Uh, no, the policy will change next, next week, but until then, it's two separate meetings, and I don't believe we start at this workshop. It's about 11:45, so that would be about 7:45.
Which we do not intend to be hearing until 11:45. Yeah, so I heard the majority of the boards support some expansion of career technical education, okay. I believe, oh, I was asking for any objections. I know, I heard yours, but, I believe I heard the majority of the board support the idea of exploring closing KCW and doing something, either selling it or something else. Do I hear any objection to that? Okay. I heard some of my colleagues talk about wanting to reexamine the North Fork situation, whether that's, you know, looking at JA or something else. Do I hear an objection to that?
Objection.
So I have one objection. Yes, Ms. Rupert? Another one? Okay, so I hear two objections to exploring more things at North Fork, but I'm still hearing the majority of the board want to pursue that. And then I, Ms. Silvera proposed getting some estimates for our school sites. Do I hear any objection to that? Nope. Okay. And I heard Mrs. Alhadeff want to explore additional programming at Forest Glen. Do I hear an objection to that? Was there anything else that I left out, or that Dr. Wanza and staff need? Yes, Ms. Rupert?
Same as Ms. Alhadeff, more programmatic situation happening at Margate Middle School.
Okay, so I hear Ms. Rupert wanting to explore more programming at Margate Middle. Do I hear an objection to that? Yes, the career, yes. So I don't hear an objection to that. Okay. Dr. Wanza, is there anything else you need from the board?
Are we okay with the recommended modifications to the timeline?
Are we, is everyone good with the recommended changes to the timeline?
I'm sorry, could you summarize this?
We'll have to go back and look.
No, it's okay, Ms. Leonardo.
Go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
So essentially, it is moving the community meetings to the three dates that we specified in the timeline. I think it's October 27th, November 6th, and November 13th, I think is the days, as well as the boundary committee meeting on November 18th, to do their vote, or to give their feedback for the recommendations that will be further analyzed. And then, once the board sets its calendar after the organizational meeting, then we can actually say, you know, when we're coming to the December workshop, the date the superintendent will issue his final recommendations memo in December, as well as the two January dates for when decisions will be placed on the January board agenda, and then when we'll notify the public.
Ms. Thompson? Can we just go through the proposals? Because my community is so confused about what's going forward and what's not. Like, the major ones where we're consolidating schools or closing schools. I hear Forest Glen, we're putting, looking at putting programs in, but just...
Dr. Wanza, can your team go over what was captured?
From what I understand, there doesn't seem to be consensus here today to look at any type of boundary changes in the North as it relates to the middle schools, only conversations around programmatic improvements, enhancements at the schools, right? So if that's the consensus, then when we meet with those schools, we won't be talking anything about boundaries, and they will not be a part of any boundary change process. When we get to the Central, now that the board has asked for more proposals for North Fork, then we would still have to, you know, work within some timelines, and either the boundary of North Fork is going to remain the same, or they're going to, you know, transition to Walker or something else, but North Fork would stay in the conversation.
Yep. If you could stop right there.
Okay.
I think we need consensus on that part about taking that building offline for the current K through five students.
Yes.
I support that.
And while we're looking at the other proposals, right, so we're going to go out and look at other proposals, including JA's for North Fork, but we just need to know if we need to continue the conversation about closing that school for the current K through five students in that building.
Yes.
And Chair, do you want us to weigh in if we heard things differently?
Yeah.
I thought the idea of Forest Glen was we were going to look at programming as one option, we're still going to keep it on the agenda as a school that we could close as well.
I think we're going off of consensus that we heard, so you can add, but I know Dr. Wanza's going off of the consensus that we heard.
I'm sorry, did you hear consensus of not closing Forest Glen Middle School?
I believe I heard enough to say not to, but if I was wrong, then I'm certainly, I can...
I would, I would like to kind of rebid that, Chair.
Okay.
Because I heard plenty of people that said, you know, we need to do everything that's recommended, and then more.
So when I, I asked about exploring further programming, I meant per Mrs. Alhadeff's recommendation to not close Forest Glen. So let me clarify that. Does anyone object to not consolidating Forest Glen?
I do.
That's two objections. So not a majority. Yes, Dr. Holness.
I am supportive of both looking at programmatic options for Forest Glen, as well as leaving the option of closing on the table.
Okay, three objections.
So I just want to be clear, when we go to the community, we need to talk about either or. It is very difficult for us to go to a community and say, hey, we're closing this school, but on the other hand, we want to talk to you about programmatic options also. So that's where the consensus is going to help us to be very direct, to get the exact information we need when we go out to the community, instead of going out, talking about what ifs for both. So just what we need as a staff as we go out, to be very clear to the community about what the expectations are going to be for that particular campus.
If you need that, I wonder, Chair, if we can have a either or indication from our members, rather than just, you know, something more casual. It seems like the superintendent would like us to say either programatics or...
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Go with this recommendation.
That's what I was asking for originally.
Madam Chair, I have some questions as well.
Go ahead.
Okay. So Dr. Hepburn, for Forest Glen, how does the FCI compare to the schools to which the students will transfer to, if we exercise that option?
I have to pull that up. I know Forest Glen had a higher FCI.
It was 29%. The other three schools that are, that the students will transfer to, what's, how are those schools in better condition?
So we only have the FCI for Coral Springs, and Coral Springs is 19.7.
Okay, so is there a reason we don't have the FCI for the other two schools to which the kids from Forest Glen will transfer to, or the suggestion?
Hold on one second, we're going to go in the appendix. Here it is, okay. So, Ramblewood is 10.4, and I saw Sawgrass. And Sawgrass Springs is 16.2.
Okay, so the FCI for Forest Glen is significantly higher than all of these other three schools, which means that, Dr. Hepburn, that would mean it's in more, it's exhausted, it's used?
Almost.
Okay. And what's the capacity of Forest Glen versus its current enrollment?
Go ahead, Dr. Wanza.
Hold on one second. The enrollment is 9.35?
What percentage is that, Dr. Wanza? I don't have my...
57.5.
Okay, so it's 57.5% enrolled, which means that it's, would that be considered, Dr. Hepburn, significantly under enrolled?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a school that is significantly under enrolled, we also have a school that is considered use its, almost its full use of its life. And we're in, we're at a junction where redefining is necessary based upon what's happening. So I, I understand that no one would want to see their schools closed, but I also understand that if we don't act, others will act, you know? So I am supportive for that reason, because if we don't do something, the state is going to do something. So I'm supportive of those students for the reasons of, one, the school has exhausted its useful life, and number two, it's significantly under enrolled, that those students are transferred within the schools within Coral Springs, the surrounding schools that are suggested. I am not supportive, Dr. Hepburn, of those students going to Lions Creek, but stay within the three schools mentioned. So yes, I, Madam Chair, I would support, for those reasons, for us to consider closing Forest Glen, not selling the property and using it for district use.
Mrs. Alhadeff?
I 100% disagree with you. As I say before, that we are, we have 19 other middle schools that are more enrolled than Forest Glen. So if that's the case, then we should be looking at these 19 middle schools to close. We need to put programs and increase the enrollment that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I still do not see a majority of the board supporting closing Forest Glen, so I'd like to move on from that, and maybe just for everyone's sake, we could go like proposal by proposal, just to make sure that we have, we know where we are.
If it's, just so I keep up, Ms. Leonardo, if it's okay, I actually turned on page four, so I went by the, the schools that are listed there, so I'm going to go in that way. If that's okay, that's so my staff keeps up, okay. So I did hear, or we did hear consensus to continue the conversation as it relates to the Fairway and Sunshine?
Do I hear an objection to that? Nope, okay.
Okay, heard consensus around Glades Middle?
Do I hear an objection to that? Nope, okay.
Watkins, I heard that the board appreciates the partnerships or whatever is going to be pursued with the town of Pembroke Park, and then New Renaissance, whatever, would result in that boundary in the Glades conversation, so they would stay in the Glades-Hallendale around the redesigning the school. So that would keep them in the conversation as it relates to how the boundary will be drawn. Addicks, McNichol, and Olson would only be programmatic conversations, no boundary or closure conversations. Bennett would stay, not necessarily in the conversation, but support for continuing them as the elementary for the sports academy, so, but nothing around a boundary. North Fork, what, they would stay, and we're going to continue them for a possible, for the boundary, for consolidating them to another school. And then proposals, and I will have a conversation with Dr. Hepburn about that, what the proposal concept would look like.
And just to add to that, I would be very interested in also affordable housing, doing some sort of, that would be one of the proposals I would like to see.
That's, okay, thank you. Northside, nothing, boundary wise, just continue to support enhancing programming. Walker would stay in because of the relation to North Fork. And then Thurgood Marshall, I didn't capture, I don't, that's the one that I did not capture in that conversation. I know that there's the potential strategy of a K-8, but I didn't, I need to hear that one.
Does anyone want to offer their thoughts on Thurgood Marshall? Dr. Holness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I did, I did ask some clarifying questions to Dr. Hepburn to ensure that it will not reduce the surrounding student population. I've been assured that that would not happen for the surrounding elementary schools, so, Dr. Hepburn, did you want to?
Yeah, that's correct, because this K-8 will be focused. The students that are outside of that boundary would be focused on gifted and dual language, which those students are sparse across the whole county. It's not just, you know, you got a cluster of large clusters of kids in those surrounding schools, such as Sunrise Middle, Bennett, Dillard, all those schools, they don't have large clusters like that.
Okay, so I am supportive of that model, the K through eight.
I hear our district, this district board member in support of it, so I will support that as well.
All right.
Are there any objections? Okay.
Okay, first, Stranahan, it's really the programmatic piece, along with the marketing, no boundary, so that, that would not be a boundary conversation like Hallendale, this is strictly programmatic for Stranahan. And then... And then for the next one with Bear Plantation Middle and West Pine and Plantation High, they would all stay in the conversation. And there is the plantation, combining of Plantation Middle and Plantation High for the comprehensive 6 to 12, working with the city of Plantation. And then the Bear Middle to West Pine. Okay. And then the last one is in the Southwest. So the conversation around looking to expand the K8s because of what would potentially happen with Glades Middle School, that's one. And then number two, we would, as it relates to Walter C. Young, we will keep it in the conversation and bring back whether it's the transition of extended grades or completely repurposing the facility.
Oh, I have a flag.
Can I add that looking to make one, if we don't make Walter C. the gifted academy, making one of the K through 8s that we create a gifted and dual language academy? Because that program type is something my community wants.
Okay.
Just maybe not necessarily at Walter C., thank you.
Is there an objection to that?
Sounds great.
What was the, what did you capture, Dr. Wanza, for Walter C. Young?
Walter C. Young, we're going to keep it in the conversation for either the 3 through 8 gifted and dual language or a complete offlining.
So what I would prefer is we choose one of the two.
I would prefer we don't, because we don't have enough information from either. There's also a potential partnership for Pines Lakes with the senior center. Like, there's just too much more information, and it's not fair for my community to make a decision right now. Thank you.
Gotcha.
We're good? Okay. I'm glad we're all clear on that. Dr. Zeeman?
Thank you. We started today's conversation with seven schools that have been explicitly called out for closing. How many did we end up with?
The, the only one, according to my notes, I think we're at six, because I think... The only one was the Forest Glen one came off. But...
That was it?
The rest are still there. Dr. Hepburn, you see something different?
What's the one that came off?
Forest Glen.
Okay, and the rest are there. So that's six with a may, there's a maybe, though. Isn't there a maybe with two in Ms. Thompson's area? Walter C.? Okay.
Thanks, Chair.
All right. Everyone's, has their thoughts out there? Okay. At the direction of the superintendent, the following agenda topics are tentatively scheduled to be addressed during upcoming workshops. October 21st, Training FSBA Master Board Facilities Condition Assessment, FCA, Policy 1000 on Rulemaking and a Budget Update. November 4th, Rural Development for HR Policies, Bond Oversight Quarterly Update, Collective Bargaining Discussion, and Policy 1070 on Advisory Committees. Please note that the order of topics and the scheduling remain tentative and are subject to adjustment at the superintendent's discretion. Is there any, are there any suggestions for future workshops for my colleagues?
Chair, you said collective bargaining agreement, is that closed door or open?
I would imagine it's closed door.
For this one, it's probably more of an open-door discussion, but if it goes into the realm of closed door, then we would do a closed door.
I'd recommend we do both then, just as a matter of being prepared for the conversation going there. If we have it on the agenda, then we're clear with the public what we're doing.
Does anyone object to that?
I don't see Dr. Lozano, but I remember the ask about bringing information about all the bargaining contracts to a workshop.
Does anyone else have any suggestions about future workshops?
I just have one more, Chair. Yeah, there's been some really robust conversation, I think led by Ms. Thompson and others, on, on this idea, and Ms. Bowman, that if we are going through repurposing, we've got to make sure that we're doing cost-saving measures internally as well. So if we're doing the budget in November, I hope a section of that budget discussion is, how are we really answering the question that was deferred today on the reductions? I know there's a great list, but I think that we need to include that in the budget conversation when it comes back in November.
Can the superintendent accommodate that?
Yes, so we're going to talk about cost-saving measures, possible reductions. The only thing we won't get explicit about is personnel. That will come later on in the spring, just to not put our system in upheaval in those discussions in this time of the year, so, yep.
And just to clarify, the superintendent wants to do that in the October 21st, not November.
Okay, so I want to be really clear. It's fine for the superintendent to come and tell us what he's already done on October 21st. That's just a spreadsheet of things done. In November, I suspect that what this board is asking for, maybe implicitly, is these cuts are going to continue. And so I view this as in-year cuts in October and planning for budget cuts for the rest of the year in November is my, my recommendation.
Ms. Bowman?
I appreciate that, Dr. Zeeman. I agree with that as well. I think in one of the, and I don't remember where we stand with this, so correct, please correct me if I missed the email, but I believe we'd asked for a transportation plan that would, you know? Again, because we have a lot of things going on, to make sure that this is being addressed and that we're not...
So there's a couple of things. I have the follow-up on that follow-up, just to be, what the specifics were on that. But I do know that transportation is working collaboratively with the Magnet Office as we sunset consolidate magnets, regionalize magnets to, which would decrease transportation costs. So there may be some information on that aspect we could provide, but not a lot right now, because they're in the midst of working through all of that and, and working with principals and schools just to let them know the changes that are going to happen in some of the magnets.
So could we do a workshop on that so that we have a preliminary? Because I, I don't want to get to the point where we were last year where it's like, oh, we didn't...
No, a lot of that stuff will come early. My hopes is that before the end of this calendar year, we can bring some information back about... Because we have to get this information out to our principals, our families, about how the magnets are changing, which is going to, also going to impact transportation and transportation hub concepts for many of those magnets across the district. That's going to reduce transportation costs also.
And we really have to be getting ahead of it so that we, so that people, our students and our parents know what we're going to be offering. And I think there's definitely a way to, again, market it with our students, because I think that was brilliant, and it's like obvious, and how did we not really think about that? But good job, Ms. Leonardo. Because once, once the, the choice window opens, you know, we're not on top of it if we don't have these things in order already. So then what do we, you know, so I mean, this is like an emergency.
No, it's urgent for us, too.
Yeah.
Yep. It is.
Well, for you, yeah, because I'm on...
So I'm hearing that we will be having a workshop on transportation?
Well, we'll be having a workshop about magnets and all that, which includes transportation.
Got it.
Yeah, we can't, we can't have the conversation without transportation involved.
Got it. Anyone else? I would like to propose, this is not immediate or urgent, but I would like us to have a better understanding of the college preparation that we're doing for our high school students. I've been hearing for years now that our, our brace advisors are amazing, and they are overworked and a little overwhelmed. And while I feel very passionately and I'm very excited about what we're doing with career technical education, I don't want us to also forget about college prep. So I'm wondering if in the coming months, not maybe even this year, but sometime next year, if we would be interested in doing a workshop on college prep and what we're doing to educate our students about applying for college?
Absolutely. No, got to do it.
Absolutely.
All right, cool. Okay, anything else? At this...
Madam Chair?
Dr. Holness?
I don't have a workshop item, but I just want to, I just have some comments.
I was going to get to that.
Okay, got it, okay.
At this time, do you, any of my colleagues have anything to bring to the board or student successes to share? Dr. Holness?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know board member Rupert is not here, but, you know, Ely did it last year, and we've done it this year. So congratulations to Dillard on their well-earned victory at this year's Soul Bowl. Give them a round of applause, they deserve it. And as she said, for me to stop it, but as the board member for District 5, Dillard, awesome. And Ely is great, too. We, we love you, too. The game showcased skill, determination, and school spirit from both teams. Thank you to the community for their passionate support, filling the stands and celebrating this tradition. I commend both Dillard and Blanche Ely for an incredible game and look forward to next year's Soul Bowl. Congratulations once again to Dillard, 6 through 12.
Thank you, Dr. Holness. Mr. Severa?
Congratulations to Principal Turner and the entire Central Park Elementary School for winning the How Low Can You Go Challenge. This is a BCPS challenge, which is now in its 13th year, which encourages students to reduce their energy and their water consumption throughout the school year. Central Park Elementary reduced its energy usage by 35%, resulting in a cost savings of nearly $19,000. Fantastic job, I let you see. The kids can do it, we can do it, too. And to celebrate the win, our students took play, took part in a high-spirited pep rally with the Miami Heat Extreme Team. Bernie was in the house, I had the pleasure of attending. We had the mayor of Uptown Dale, who's the emcee at the Heat Games, also in attendance. The kids had a really, really good time, really cool way to, to celebrate the victory, and good for them for lowering their energy consumption last year.
Thank you, Mr. Severa. And Ms. Bowman?
I just, I just wanted to highlight really quickly our alternate student advisor, who's also the president of the SGA at South Broward High, who did an amazing job pulling off homecoming. I got to be torrentially downpour'd on at the game, so I don't even know who won, to be honest. But they were a little bit worried about the dance, they pulled it off, everyone had a great time, excellent leadership skills, planning, and it's awesome to be at the school and see how much respect that you have amongst your peers as well as along with us. So keep up the good work.
Any other of my colleagues? The scheduled order of business for this school board workshop with the school board of Broward County, Florida, has been completed, seeing no obligation. And now we're during the meeting. Thank you.